All right, calling to the meeting to order. Can I get the roll?
John Spring.
Here.
Mitzi Barker.
Here.
Grega Strike.
Here.
Danielle Bailey.
Here.
Jared Gardner.
Here.
Andre Spinelli.
Here.
Brian Looney. Tyler Robinson and Seth Anderson have been excused, thank you.
All right, before we get started, I just want to give an apology. This is my first time running a meeting, so bear with me. Also, before we get started, I just want to draw some attention to our new Planning Director, Michelle McNulty. She's presented in front of us a lot of times in the past, and I've always appreciated her, and so very excited to actually have her on staff now, so welcome aboard.[63.28][63.28](APPLAUSE). Any objections to the minutes? Oh, or a motion to approve them? Moved by Spinelli, seconded by Mr. Looney. Any objections? Seeing no objections, the minutes are approved. Any disclosures? Sorry, down, Jared, I forget your last name now that I'm on the spot.[103.82][103.82](LAUGHING).
Gardner, it's fine, you can't see the thing in front. No disclosures.
Mr. Spring.
I won't be voting on Resolution 2018-12 or 2018-13 since I was not in attendance at that meeting.
Mr. Looney.
No disclosures.
Mr. Strike.
No disclosures.
Mr. Spinelli.
None.
Ms. Barker.
Thank you. I also will not be voting on Resolutions 2018-008 through 2018-0011 as I was not present at the May 7th meeting.
All right, and I have no disclosures. Moving on to information item number two, 2018 projects to implement Anchorage 2040 land use plan.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Tom Davis with the Long Range Planning Division. We just wanted to give the Planning and Zoning Commission a brief update regarding where we are in carrying out the Anchorage 2040 Plan and to give the Planning and Zoning Commission a quick heads-up regarding five upcoming 2018 projects that you will see to carry out the plan and then to make an ask of the Commission regarding its review of several of those upcoming projects. Really quick, like, we have a brief handout that we just passed out to the Commission, and this is just for your reference. The update is basically a follow-up. We briefly, in January, gave a general overview of the overall work program for 2018 and also handed out copies of the land use plan document, which the Assembly adopted in late 2017, or September 2017. And the second page gives basically a mid-year status. Currently, there are about 10 projects among the actions, the 70 actions in the 2040 Plan that are in progress. So 14 that are either completed or in project at this point, early groundwork on an additional nine. So the plan is being carried out. The Commission spent a lot of time on this in 2017, so it isn't sitting on a shelf. We are actually carrying out a lot of things to make Anchorage a better place and achieve what the plan called for. You'll see on the third page, five projects from the Long Range Planning Division and the Planning Department that will be among the 14 or so that are underway. These five projects are primarily involving changes to the city regulations for housing and mixed use. So we are looking for ways to allow more compact housing and mixed use opportunities in the city, subject to neighborhood compatibility standards. These projects will come in a bit different form than some of the projects, changes in code that have been proposed that you've seen in the past. The first set of public review draft materials will be an initial discussion draft. That will come with a set of informational materials and illustrations for the public. And any code language or proposed changes to Title 21 zoning ordinance will come with annotation and illustration, so anyone reading it should be able to understand what's going on, or at least where to go to find out what's being proposed and why. The initial discussion draft materials on several of these five projects are coming this month, so we have an initial discussion draft materials coming very soon. We've spent the last couple of months giving this briefing to about 12 organizations, including the Federation Community Councils and six individual community councils that would be particularly affected, six other organizations ranging from the Live, Work, Play Land Trust Chamber, we're meeting with the home builders this week. We've also given the heads-up to the Urban Design Commission, in case the Urban Design Commission wishes to provide some comments regarding some of the design aspects of these. They would provide those to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Three-step process, as the diagram shows, basically an initial community discussion draft, subject to public review, consultations, testing. We think those, that feedback from the public, from stakeholders, could result in a lot of changes to the draft, and so we would then come out with a second draft, would be, that would eventually go for a public hearing. But that second draft would also receive a public review period for the stakeholders. In no small part because we think that because of some of the changes that could occur in the draft, from first to second draft, that it would be important for the public, the stakeholders, to be able to see those substantial changes. And then, after Planning and Zoning Commission hearing, your deliberations and actions in a final draft, a Planning and Zoning Commission recommended draft would go to the Assembly. Three-step process. We've established a beachhead in our webpages. There is a webpage, easiest way to get there is to Google, the search, Anchorage 2040 land use plan implementation projects. There's not much information there yet, but over this week and the next week, more will be appearing. Briefly, the projects are, page four, a project to make our available reductions to required parking requirements easier to use, some of the entitled reductions to make those by right, so when a developer, home builder, wishes to consider making a reduction, having those by right will provide certainty that as they invest in a site plan, they can be relatively certain they'll get those parking reductions, and making some other changes there, as you see in the bullets. The second project is the first of two projects focused on compatible infill housing, attached housing, townhouses, and multifamily, two-family housing. This project, we've titled, for the time being, "Comparable Scale Infill Housing Project", responds to concerns from builders, as well as existing neighborhoods, regarding the R2M zone and some of the regulations in the R2M zone. Essentially, it would be replacing an existing 2.5-story, two-and-a-half-story height limitation in the R2M with three-story, allowing the full three stories to the full 30-foot height allowed in the district if the R2M building steps back. Overall goal is to retain the single-family scale called for in those districts, especially on the smaller infill lots going in between existing homes, but to allow more flexibility so that larger lots can get the full three-story buildings. So the photograph on your left is that existing two-and-a-half-story, single-family scale, even if it does have several units in it. Photo on your right, three-story building on a larger lot, townhouses. Page six, a larger-scale amendment to Title 21 affecting the R3, possibly the R2 district, R2M districts, looking at allowing, subject to additional compatibility standards, one or two more units on a lot. Also, reassessing required minimum driveway widths and other site requirements that may be barriers to compact housing neighborhoods. Second to last page, on page seven, the fourth out of fifth projects I'll report on here, is amendment to our mixed-use development standards and our mixed-use zoning. Again, responding to concerns about, basically, some of the regulations for our mixed-use projects going in the B3 zone are actually, it's actually more regulations facing mixed use projects than office or retail, standalone retail projects going in next door. Streamlining regulations in our R4A, mixed-use residential multifamily zone, to make that easier to use and more enticing, and to fix an existing zoning tool to make it better able to implement the town centers, the mixed-use town centers called for in the land use plan map. Lastly, the last page, Planning Department is not lead on this last project, but we are very much involved with helping the Office of Economic Community Development create the enabling ordinance for one of the main strategies in the Anchorage 2040 Plan. That is to create reinvestment-focused areas, something a little bit different from a zoning district, but basically identifying an area that is a potential redevelopment area and focusing a lot of attention, different kinds of strategies in that area to provide more housing and help revitalize those areas. This project would begin with establishing the procedure in the municipal code by which the municipality can specifically designate the exact boundaries of the reinvestment-focused areas and formally approve those. Approval would be by the Anchorage Assembly. It would build in a number of incentives and other provisions in the regulations, for example, potentially opening up additional tax abatement for multifamily and other housing types in these designated areas. Once that enabling ordinance is completed and some additional code amendments completed, we would then be able, as a municipality, to designate the first of the number of the reinvestment-focused areas called for in the Anchorage 2040 Plan. We're really taking a hard look at that potentially being Spinard Midtown area, centered in Central Spinard. Along with that, there is a targeted area rezoning called for in the Anchorage 2040 Plan in Spinard Midtown, which the municipality Planning Department would facilitate and carry out with the support of the property owners and the community there, and some other projects. So these are upcoming projects. Again, you may see at least several of these initial discussion draft materials for that first of three drafts coming here this June. We hope to provide the different stakeholder organizations enough time to review that, provide feedback on that. During that review period this summer, we would appreciate the opportunity of coming back with Planning and Zoning Commission in some form, whether that's an information item or other form, in a way to let you know what kind of feedback we're getting and to provide commissioners with enough information to be able to ask questions. Our overall goal is that by the time these, this batch, each of these amendments, these projects reaches the Planning and Zoning Commission for a public hearing, that the Commission is well aware of them, has had opportunity to ask questions about them, and provided any informal comments, feedback. Thank you for this opportunity, and I do hope to talk with you, see you again at some point later this summer, and answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Ms. Barker, do you have a question or comment?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tom, I was curious how this is being coordinated with the office over at the Health Department that manages the CDBG and home funds?
Well, at this point, I've made one contact there. At this point, I've only, we've had consultations with four agencies so far, and as we come out with the initial draft, I hope to bring the materials to CDBG contacts there and to discuss those with CDBG. And if it's appropriate, to also consult with the Hand Commission. At this point, we've consulted with UDC. So no contacts yet, they are on the list of additional agencies we need to talk with, but thank you.
I'd like to suggest that it's pretty imperative that it be coordinated with them, not just optional, and I know obviously that maybe have to happen at a higher-up level, but, you know, they have to write their consolidated plan, which is a three-year strategy for focused investment. We had, you know, a series of other designated zones some time ago, this is kind of the latest iteration of it. It really does need to be coordinated so they can target their investment resources in a coordinated manner with this, you know, much broader city policy initiative. Thanks.
Thank you, we'll do that.
Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you so much. Moving on to our consent agenda, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, or any items someone wishes to pull? Moved by Commissioner Spinelli, seconded by Commissioner Gardner. Any objections? Consent agenda is approved. We're now moving on to our public hearings. Before we get started, I'm assuming there are a lot of people new to public hearings, so I'm going to go ahead and read the rules for Planning and Zoning Public Hearings. The procedure by which the public may speak to the commission at its meeting is as follows: After the staff presentation is completed on public hearing items, the chair will ask for public testimony on the issue. Persons who wish to testify will follow the time limits established in the commission rules of procedure. Petitioners, including all of his or her representatives, are allotted 10 minutes. Part of this time may be reserved for rebuttal. Representative groups, such as community councils, PTAs, et cetera, get five minutes. Individuals are allocated three minutes. When your testimony is complete, you may be asked questions by the commission. You may only testify once on any issue unless questioned by the commission. An individual may have an appeal right relating to any action the Planning and Zoning Commission takes, except commission recommendations of the Assembly, which are not appealable. Appeals must be filed by the Clerk's Office within 20 days after approval by Planning and Zoning Commission of the resolution, which is the commission's final decision. A fee for the appeal is required at the time of filing. Now move on to Case 2018-0055. Petitioner, MGJ Building Group. And first, the staff with their presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a request for a conditional use approval for a four-unit multifamily development within the GR4 district in Girdwood. The development of two townhouse-style duplexes totaling four dwelling units on this 0.28-acre parcel will result in a net housing density of 14 dwelling units per acre. Conditional uses require that nine approval criteria be met for approval. The Planning Department makes the following findings. Criteria one, the standard is met. The Girdwood area plan identifies this parcel as multifamily residential. The proposed use is consistent with the parcel's designation, the Girdwood area plan, as well as all applicable Title 21 dimensional and design standards, as well as state and federal regulation. Criteria two, the standard is met. The district-specific standards of this zoning district are met. This land use entitlement is to be approved through a conditional use. Criteria three, the standard is met by default. The use-specific standards for multifamily structures within Girdwood only apply to developments with 10 or more dwelling units. This standard does not apply to this project, since it will only have a total of four dwelling units. Criteria four, the standard is met. The minimum lot size required for a multifamily development within a GR4 district is 12,500 square feet. The subject parcel is 12,500 square feet and can adequately accommodate this use. On-site topography is not significant enough to restrict the development on this lot. For criteria five, the standard is met. Neighboring properties will continue to fully enjoy the land use rights and privileges afforded to them upon completion of this project. This use will not limit or prevent the development of neighboring properties for uses allowed within their respective zoning districts. For criteria six, the standard is met. The proposed multifamily development is similar in scale to other neighboring multifamily structures. This residential use is not likely to generate excessive traffic, noise, odor, or dust upon completion, and during construction, the applicant will have to, will be required to comply with all applicable provisions related to excessive noise, dust, stormwater pollution prevention, and impacts to adjacent roadways from construction equipment. For criteria seven, the standard is met. The petitioner has worked with neighboring residents to mitigate impacts to view sheds and has taken their concerns into account. In addition, all applicable design standards for a multifamily development within Girdwood have been met. It does not appear that surrounding properties will be adversely impacted by this development. For criteria eight, the standard is met. The existing road network that will be used by future residents of this development is adequate to support their needs without increasing traffic congestion or negatively impacting the safety of multimodal user groups. Public transportation is provided by Glacial Valley Transit. The regularly-served transit stop is located within a quarter-mile, which is approximately a five-minute walk of the petition site. And criteria nine, the standard is met. The site is served by public water and wastewater. Fire protection is provided by the Girdwood Fire and Rescue Department, and police protection is provided by Whittier Fire Department, and, on occasion, Alaska State Troopers. We did receive one late comment from Kyle Kelly of the Girdwood Street Maintenance. It's unclear if commissioners received a copy of the comment, so I'd just like to read it out loud to get it on the record. Per a request from Watership Management, Marco Zaccaro and I met onsite, may tend to discuss the relocation of the drainage ditch as per design, page SK-1 in the plans. I fully support and approve the relocation of the ditch as designed. It improves the flow and ability to maintain this section of the drainage. Taos Drainage System moves a good amount of water from during rain events and spring melts. These improvements will help strengthen the system. And the Planning Department recommends approval of the conditional use, subject to the conditions as stated on page six of the staff report. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any questions for staff? Seeing no questions for staff, I open up to the petitioner for their presentation. If you could give us your name and spell it, and then let us know if you'd like to reserve any time for rebuttal.
Okay. My name is Marco Zaccaro, I'm with Z Architects. My last name is spelled Z-A-C-C-A-R-O, first name Marco, M-A-R-C-O. And I have a copy of a letter from Kyle Kelly I'd like to lay on the table, if you'd like a copy of that.
Sure, you can bring it up. Oh, we have that one.
If you don't mind, a couple of minutes, I'd like to reserve some time for rebuttal, but we're going to get these boards set up for you real quick.
Would that be two minutes for rebuttal? All right, thank you.
So the location of this is in the GR4 zoning district at the base of Alyoska. Here, at the end of Taos Road. The neighboring districts are all zoned multifamily residential, and they're significantly built out to the same density as proposed development. To the west is single-family development, and then multifamily development here, so this project is in keeping with the, with the local fabric. The site plan, which is, should be coming up here shortly.
Sorry, can I ask you to, from the side here?
Yeah.
I'm not able to see those in the morning.
Okay. Sorry, we came up a little quicker in the agenda than we had anticipated. So the site plan shows the buildings are in two pockets. There's a stream, significant stream, that runs through the south edge of the site. There's a drainage ditch on the east end, then it converts over to the stream on the, towards the west, and the setbacks change from 10 feet to 25 feet, which requires two pockets, allows two buildable pockets, and that's why we set it up to two duplexes. The decks are oriented away from all the neighbors to the west. The required onsite parking is eight spaces, and we are providing nine. All parking driveway circulation is easily accommodated onsite. There's adequate snow storage and retained vegetation, and if we can bring up the actual architectural site plan, Allison.[1570.01][1570.01](APPLAUSE). You can see here the two buildings, the...
If you could step a little closer to the mic, just so we can pick you up. Yeah, you can.
The west building, we permitted under a land use permit because it's a use-by-right. The east building, we are, is the only one that's affected by this conditional use permit because we exceed the dwelling, the density, units per acre. As you can see from the site plan, we come in on the north edge of the site. We have two parking spots for each unit, accommodated in each unit, so that gives us eight, and then we added a ninth one, which exceeds our minimum requirement. And I'd like to, if possible, have Laquita come up and talk about the civil portion of the project, or to explain the drainage.[1641.11][1641.11](APPLAUSE).
Good evening, my name is Laquita Chmilowsky, C-H-M-I-E-L-O-W-S-K-Y, and I'm with Enterprise Engineering, and I'm the civil engineer on the project. The site is graded to drain to the southwest corner of the parking area, and it'll, as part of Phase Two, will be required to meter the water to the onsite drainage way, and that will be accomplished by a dry well, which will be designed for the 10-year, 24-hour storm. As Marco mentioned, the first phase has already been permitted under a land use permit, and we've worked closely with Watershed to make sure there are adequate notes and guidance to maintain the stream setback and ditch setback.
Typical floor plans for the units are parking on the first level, living spaces on the second level, and then bedrooms on the third level, and typical townhouse setup. The elevations, the drafted elevations, as you can see, are here.
Yeah, if it helps, you can actually move the mic.
Yeah, sorry.[1745.11][1745.11](APPLAUSE).
You can carry it around, too, if it makes it easier.
So you can see the drafted elevations, it's a contemporary look, fully meets all the requirements of the Girdwood land use regulations for design standards for multifamily dwelling. You can see the drafted elevations as you have them in your packet. And then, the site rendering for the entire site is here, and I don't think you have that in your packet. So that's the, how the project will look upon completion, for both Phase One and Phase Structural engineering is, we'll have a structural engineer onboard, Seth Anderson, who's also on the Commission here, and he's done a lot of work in Girdwood. All our... All our snowshed does not, we control for snowshed, so snow doesn't land in front of any openings. Our roof design is for 160 pounds per square foot, which is more than adequate for Girdwood. We've addressed all the neighbor concerns. We had early hearings that we invited all the neighbors to, got their early concerns. Most, most of the concerns had to do with, originally, we had some rooftop hot tub decks, and they were concerned about noise and parties, so we removed those. And then, we also removed any decks that were oriented towards the west that directly impacted the nearest neighbors. The, the neighbors across Taos were concerned about snow storage, and, you know, we have more than enough snow storage as, more than is required by code minimum for Girdwood. And then, the neighbors across the street were also worried about on-street parking. There tends to be on weekends with the multifamily district, people parking on the street, and we've added an extra parking spot to help take care of that beyond what were required. And more recently, the Girdwood has adopted policing for its parking requirements. So, as time moves on, people will be ticketed if they're actually parked on the street against, against any signage. And that's all our presentation. Sorry, it's a little rocky.
Thank you. It looks like you still have almost three minutes left for rebuttal. Are there any questions for our petitioner, Mr. Strick?
Thank you, and through the chair. I do note that the Girdwood Land Use Commission had expressed some concerns about the comment. Project seems too large for the building area, too close to other existing structures are identified here. So, but you made mention that the surrounding area is already built out to the same density?
That's correct.
So, all the adjoining lots to this are built out to the same density?
Across the street on the east side, that's correct. Across Taos, on the east side of Taos, that is correct.
Across the street? What about the neighboring?
There's, to the north, that's a vacant lot, but that's zoned multifamily, and it could be developed out to the same density. To the south, that's a single-family house, but it's on the other side of the drainage way, so it's a significant ways away from our project, and we won't...
So, one is a single-family, the other's a vacant lot? Is that...
Yeah, that's correct. And that comment did not come from the, the Land Use Committee itself. It came from one of the neighbors that testified at the Land Use Committee hearing.
Yeah, correct. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Then, we will open it up to public comments from the floor. Does anyone wish to make any testimony here this evening? Come right up. Members, state your names, spell it out. Let us know if you're representing an organization. And then, the little lights up here give you an indicator, I think at one minute remaining? Yeah, one's, yeah.
I'll try and make it brief. My name is Jeff Moore, M-O-O-R-E. I am actually one of the neighbors behind this building, so I live on 179 Crystal Mountain Way, which is directly to the west of that, I believe. So, I have some concerns about the density of this housing project. That is, there is a watershed is to the south of this, so they're having to cram all these buildings right into the back area, and right, really, right up against our property line, and I think these are large buildings. I'm concerned about the drainage that's going to be coming into our area, especially from snow. There's a large amount of snow that happens in the Girdwood area there also. So, I'm encouraged, the fact that when we were first told about this, that they were talking about putting a jacuzzi at the top of a three-story building that's 10 feet away from our property line, which was concerning. I'm glad they have decided not to do that, but I still think that the amount of buildings that are in that area, it's just too high-density. While there, it is zoned for that, I understand that, I believe that our street, just below that, is all single dwellings. Really, on that side of the street, this will be the first multi-dwelling structure that I believe on that side. On the opposite of the street, it is, it's a multi-dwellings, but I'm concerned about, really, the amount of building that's being put in that area, so.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to make a comment in front of the body? Seeing no further public comments, if you would like to take time for your rebuttal?
So, just to clarify a couple things. The setback that's along the west side of the property is 10 feet, which is what's set by code. The drainage way has a 25-foot setback on the western portion and a 10-foot setback on the eastern portion, and we are maintaining both of those with this development. The municipality also requires us, as part of the, of the development, to do a full drainage analysis, and we cannot discharge any more water than currently goes off-site. So, that's why we're going to be looking at dry well or an underground system that will meter the water so that it is, isn't any more runoff than what's seen by the area now.
And Mr. Strick, was that a question for the...
This is a question for the individual. And I think we heard, too, I mean, we get a lot of snowfall down here in this area. We have a snow area storage that's going to be created. It's going to be frozen thaw, frozen thaw. How do we prevent the runoff going to adjoining properties? I know you talked about a subterranean well that's going to be a dry well and so forth that's going to be located on the property, but mounds of, mounds of snow don't always adhere to, adhere.
Understood. So, I guess, just to clarify, the site naturally drains towards the drainage way, so even if the system were, the, the dry well or an underground infiltration system were to not work like we planned, it's going to go through the vegetated buffer, which is 10 to 25 feet, before it reaches the drainage way and then finds its way off property, and it eventually connects to Glacier Creek. And we are required to look at all of those things as part of the drainage report. We cannot drain onto other people's property or cause a problem for them as part of our design work.
So, you've had this conversation with the adjoining property owners that have expressed the concern?
We did at the Girdwood Land Use meetings. We've talked about the drainage.
The individual who just spoke, you've had an opportunity to address his concerns?
I have not talked to him individually, but I believe he was at one of the meetings we attended.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioners, if I may comment on the multifamily dwellings are also on Crystal. The first two properties, as you can see on this diagram, there's multifamily dwellings. This is Taos, but Crystal, there's multifamily dwellings here, there's multifamily dwellings here, too. So, the gentleman who just spoke, his house is in this location, and there's multifamily dwellings, three properties away on the same side of the road. Also, in regard to the snow shedding onto neighbor properties, we configured the roofs so that there's no, no shedding towards the west, towards his property.
What's, what's the dominant age of the current single-family structures that are there now? Are we seeing this as a transitional area that folks are beginning to build more multifamily?
There's a severe housing shortage in Girdwood, and multifamily housing is becoming more desirable to address this. So, any lots that are zoned multifamily have a lot of interest from buyers in putting multifamily, and even to the extent of getting rid of older homes. I'm not sure of the exact age of the houses on Crystal. I know there, many of them were built in the late 70s, early 80s, so I don't know if they would be considered old, but this, the gentleman who just spoke, his house is fairly nice, and I don't think it would be, you know, ripe for redevelopment, but there are other properties in that same area that would be.
You still have about a minute and a half remaining, if you have anything further?
I think that's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And what's the will of the body? Also, I have to close the public hearing, so the public hearing is officially closed. There's a motion by Mr. Spring, second by Mr. Looney.
Yes, in the case of 2018-0055, a conditional use for multifamily residents with a housing density of 14 units per acre within a GR4 district, I move to recommend approval, or recommend, or I move to approve the conditional use with the conditions as listed on page six of the staff report, the three conditions listed in the staff report.
And would you like to speak to your motion?
Yeah, it seems clear that the... Push the button there. Seems clear that the petitioner has listened to the neighbors and has done a, has tried to conform the development to the constraints of the property, especially the, the drainage constraints, and I also note that they, in response to complaint by the neighbors or a comment by a neighbor, that they reoriented the decks to not intrude upon the private space of the adjoining property to the west. I think that was a very positive move, and as a result, I, I think they have tried to respond to comments, and it's, it looks like be a development that generally is compatible with the neighborhood, and it's compatible with, consistent with the Girdwood Comprehensive
Mr. Looney?
Yes, I, too, will support the, the motion. It does appear that the applicant has gone to, the design is centered around trying to solve some of the issues that we all know about in Girdwood with the drainage. They have some green space between the development and the ditch, and I guess the supplementary information we got from Girdwood Street Maintenance, where they say they, they support the development based on the reconfiguration of the ditch. So, I think they've, they've gone a long ways to make things work. So, I, I think it's a, it's a positive development.
And Mr. Garner?
I'll support the motion as well, and I agree with the comments that were made thus far, and I just wanted to note that the Girdwood, or the Girdwood Board of Supervisors provided a resolution of support for this application. Just had that on the record.
And seeing no other commissioners willing to speak, should I call for a vote? And that motion passes. And since our next hearing will probably be kind of long, I'm going to move us in... Call us back to order. Moving on to agenda item G2, case 2018-0052, Big Country Enterprises LLC. Staff, do you have a presentation?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to start by reading from the Hillside District Plan. This clarifies three things about this case. The petition site lies within the southeast area of the plan. Policy 1B is the applicable Hillside District policy, and it calls for land use designations of less than one dwelling unit per acre for this site to remain the same, but it, for land use designations to remain the same, but it does not discourage rezonings. The plan supports R10 zoning in this area. The Rabbit Creek Community Council knows this, and that is why their meeting minutes from last year stated support for rezoning to R10 instead of R6. So, the southeast hillside residential subheading on page 2-9 of the Hillside District Plan states, "Policy 1B: Maintain Policies for the Amount of Development as Allowed Under Current Land Use Designations." The southeast hillside is defined as the area generally above Hillside Drive and south of Glen Alps. That's where this petition site is located. The area takes in much or all of the Rabbit Creek and Potter Creek watersheds. This area includes most of the steeper and higher elevation sections of the Hillside District. This plan maintains existing residential land use designations in the southeast hillside. The majority of the area is classified for residential intensities of one dwelling unit per acre, and much is currently zoned R10. The R10 zoning district was created for alpine slope areas and establishes minimum lot sizes, sizes based on slope. The greater the slope, the greater the minimum lot size. New development can occur in these areas, but will follow the new development standards and the Build Green Infrastructure approach. Is the Planning Department upholding the Hillside District Plan by recommending approval for this rezone? The answer is yes, because it's written in the plan. The maximum dwelling units per acre theoretically possible on this property as R10 zoning is 0.45 dwelling units per acre. That is less than half a dwelling unit per acre. That is less than the land to the west and north, which have over one dwelling unit per acre and 0.6 dwelling units per acre, respectively. The 0.45 dwelling units per acre theoretically possible at this site is similar to the land to the east. Some public comments, some public comments said that the Planning Department, some public comments that the Planning Department received challenged whether the code allows this rezone application to be processed. The code requires a two-year waiting period after the same rezone request has been denied by the Assembly. The Assembly did not deny any prior rezone, or prior rezoning application. Some public comments stated that this rezone application should not be processed until after the appeal of the preliminary plat has been decided by the Board of Adjustment. There is nothing in the code that supports that claim. This rezone can proceed. The applicant does not have to wait for a decision on the appeal. They are two totally separate cases, the plat and the rezone. It has been pointed out that the Planning Department recommended denial of the first rezone application to R6. So, how can the department support this rezone to R10? I was not the planner assigned to that case, but it's my impression that the department was not confident at the time that the land could support smaller lots because of wetlands, streams, and topography. Now, all those questions have been answered. The property has one stream, one drainage way, Class C wetlands. We know the extent of the wetlands boundary and the setbacks, and the testing shows that wells and septic systems will work. Also, this application is being processed under the new code, which is a totally different zoning code with different approval criteria, and the Anchorage 2040 land use plan is now adopted. The first rezone also had less land because it did not involve Ferguson-Jones subdivision. And I would add a point that this is the, the Planning Department's recommendation, not the recommendation of a single planner. To the people who have criticized me personally, and will probably say things about me again tonight, I have been open and honest and transparent with you. I have not shied away from meeting with you and having hard conversations. I answered every one of your phone calls. I told you the truth, even when it was not information that you wanted to hear. I am responsive, reliable, and transparent, even when I know that my words will be twisted or quoted out of context later. Now, in regards to the nine approval criteria for a rezone, criteria one, the department finds to be met. The R10 district is intended for lands affected by topography and sensitive environmental features. The R10's district, R10 districts allow density is less than one dwelling unit per acre. This rezoning, this zoning district is specifically intended for large hillside parcels with streams, drainage ways, and wetlands like this property. A subdivision review by the Plating Board and compliance with regulations for subdivisions, roads, drainage, and well and septic systems will determine the ultimate number of lots. In regards to approval criteria for rezonings, number two, the standard is met. The R10 district complies with the Hillside District Plan and the Anchorage 2040 land use plan map. The R10 district is an implementing district of these plans. The Hillside District Plan, Hillside District Plan land use plan map identifies the petition site as, quote, "limited density, zero to one dwelling units per acre." Anchorage 2040 shows the site as, quote, "large lot residential." Anchorage 2020 has two applicable policies, Policy 5 and Policy 7. The R10 zone is compatible with the adjoining lots on all sides. The minimum lot size allowed in the R10 district is based on average slope of each lot, and the smallest permitted lot area is 1 and 1/4 acres, which is similar in size to the residential lots to the east. to the residential lots to the east. The lots to the north and west are smaller, with about one acre and 1/3 of an acre respectively. The tract of land to the south is unsubdivided. The R-10 district is compatible with adjoining zoning districts and uses. The districts surrounding the petition site are large lot zoning districts, and the neighboring subdivisions are developed with single-family detached homes. Unlike the R-8 district, the R-10 district does not allow duplexes. The R-8 district allows 35-foot-tall buildings, whereas the R-10 only allows 30-foot-tall buildings, which is five foot less. The R-10 district does not allow any lots smaller than 1 and 1/4 acres, which is more than three times the size of the subdivisions to the west. Depending on topography, the lots at this petition site will be similar in size to the subdivisions to the north and east, if not larger. Note that all of the subdivisions in this area are separated from the petition site by roads, except for two lots to the east. Therefore, incompatibility is not an issue. The applicable policies from the Hillside District Plan are the whole Policy 1-A and Southeast Hillside Residential Policy 1B. This rezone to R-10 complies with the Hillside District Plan's land use designation, which is less than one dwelling unit per acre. In regards to approval criteria, number three, the standard is met. The R-10 district is intended for... This is a quote from the purpose statement of the R-10. "The R-10 district is intended for use in those areas where natural physical features and environmental factors such as slopes, alpine and forest vegetation, soils, slope stability, geologic hazards require unique and creative design for development. Creative site design and site engineering are essential to ensure that the development of these lands will: a) protect natural features such as ponds, streams, wetlands, and springs, and incorporate such features into the development and site design; ensure the use of site design techniques that take into account... Take into consideration topographic constraints and other physical features; retain the natural flow and storage capacity of any water course and wetland to minimize the possibility of flooding and alteration of wetlands' boundaries; assure that soil and subsoil conditions are suitable for excavation, site preparation, on-site water disposal. This petition site lies within the building safety area." Approval criteria number four, the standard is met. The subject property is surrounded by R-6, R-8, R-9, and R-10 districts, which are suburban or rural residential districts that require at least an acre in size. The smallest lot size allowed in the R-10 district is greater than 1 and 1/4 acres. And the minimum lot size is determined by the average slope of each lot. Approval criteria number five, the standard is met. Both the Private Development Division and the Traffic Department have no objection to this rezone to R-10. Both of these municipal agencies will review future subdivision... The future subdivision. And the traffic engineer will require a traffic... Has the ability to require a traffic impact analysis in accordance with Anchorage Municipal Code Title 21, Chapter 7, Section 060(c)(1), traffic impact analysis required. The site is bounded by Upper DeArmen Road, Canyon Road, and Messina Street on three sides, and an undeveloped tract to the south. Upper DeArmen Road and Canyon Road are both collector streets. Messina is a local road. Upper DeArmen Road is a paved street, and Canyon Road is in the process of being paved. Messina is a gravel road. The site is located within the Building Safety, Police, and Park and Recreation Service areas. The property is within the fire and EMS service areas and is served by Fire Stations 8 and 10. Approval criteria number six, the standard is met. The R-10 district will not result in adverse impacts on the natural environment. This district is intended for suburban and rural areas on the hillside. Any future subdivision of the property will require approval by the Plating Board and meet the design standards in Chapter 8 of Title 21, the Subdivision Regulations. Approval criteria number seven, the standard is met. The R-10 district will not result in adverse impacts on neighboring properties, including residential subdivisions and Rabbit Creek. Development of the property requires a building permit... Building permit approval of plans for drainage, roads, on-site well and septic systems. Approval criteria eight, the standard is met. Consistent with the Hillside District Plan and Anchorage 2040 Land Use Plan, the R-10 district requires less than one dwelling unit per acre. Approval criteria nine is also met. This will not create a split zone... Split zone lot. The department finds that all nine approval criteria met, and therefore recommends approval of this rezoning from R-8 to R-10. Attached is a draft Assembly ordinance. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Any questions for staff? Mr. Spring?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I didn't see anything in the packet regarding what the anticipated number of units or number of lots was going to be. And there seemed like it varied from like, up to like 45. And now I hear that you said that it will be 0.45 dwelling units per acre. Have you calculated that recently or after the staff report? And if you have, can you explain how you arrived at that density?
Through the chair, Mr. Spring. This rezone application was not accompanied by a preliminary plat or a subdivision. It's not required to. A lot of work goes into designing a subdivision to the appropriate zoning district. I guess it would be especially complicated because you'd have to figure out the average... The minimum lot size for each lot based on the average slope of the lot. I did not try to make a guess about how many lots could be constructed. What I did was calculate the gross dwelling units per acre, which is to say, to take the area and then just theoretically divide that by the minimum lot area, 1 and 1/4 acres. And that's what you come up with, the dwelling units per acre of 0.45.
So that's the maximum?
Theoretically. But of course, it's going to be much less than 0.45 dwelling units per acre, because that doesn't even take into account that some of the lots will have topography exceeding 30% and drive up the minimum lot area. I'm just saying theoretically. If you were to just say the property is flat and then divide it by the minimum lot acreage, then you'd come up with that dwelling units per acre.
I guess... I'm not sure I agree with that calculation, because if you have a minimum of 1.25 acres, minimum, you would calculate the density, wouldn't you? Divide one by 1.25? And that would be 0.8, right?
That's correct, but there'll be right-of-way dedication. It takes up 20% to 25% of the land. There's 77 acres approximately, not 80. And then there's 20 acres of Class C wetlands that will go into a wetlands tract. So the remaining property is less than the... Maybe the 80 acres that you were using.
Well, that's the explanation I was looking for. So you included the wetland tract that they had in the conservation subdivision that they submitted previously? So that would see... Then that would be a minimum... A maximum of like, my calculation is like, about 35 lots?
I didn't... I didn't take it to that step, sir.
Well, that would be, I think, if... Okay. I just want to establish that that would be the maximum.
Thank you.
And Mr. Looney?
What's the impact of the ongoing Plating Board action with the conservation subdivision? I think it's included in our packet. I think it shows 16 lots with a large tract. And you note the event in the project history, I guess, page two of your packet.
Through the chair, Mr. Looney. What I had said in my comments were that... So the Board of Adjustment has not set a hearing for the neighbors' appeal of the approval of the preliminary plat by the Plating Board. The thrust of my comment when I spoke earlier was to say that it has no bearing on this application for a rezoning. So again, the... Under the R-8 zoning, the applicant applied for approval of a preliminary plat. Plating Board approved the preliminary plat. The next step is to turn in the final plat and record that. But it... The decision of the Plating Board has been appealed, and the appeal goes to the Board of Adjustment. That is on a sort of a separate tract from this rezoning. Maybe to get to where you're going with your question or helpful piece of information is that if this rezone to R-10 were to be approved by the Assembly, then I believe the applicant would have to begin all over again with a new plat, because I think there's probably almost no chance that their previously designed preliminary plat would meet all the R-10, you know, average slope, minimum lot area requirements. They couldn't just sort of take that one off the shelf that's under the appeal and go with that. They'd have to redesign the subdivision.
Okay. That sounds fine.
Any other questions? I actually have a question. I noted that you mentioned all the surrounding zoning areas, and one was... It's not directly abutting, but you mentioned another R-10 zone, but it was an R-10 SL. And can you tell us the special limitations of that area?
Yeah, the special limitation says that it must have a minimum of 1 and 1/4 acres for each lot.
So essentially, that was the difference between new Title 21?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Well, I'm sorry. Old Title 21 and new Title 21 both have an acre and a quarter. The SL on that property set a minimum... I looked it up, and I didn't include it in the packet, but I think it said a minimum of 1 and 1/4 acre. The reason why I didn't include it, because it didn't have any relevancy. It didn't offer anything to us. There was nothing in that SL that would be helpful to some of the neighbors who have criticized or objected to the rezone.
All right. Thank you. And seeing no other questions from the board, I would like to call the petitioner to come up. And let us know if you'd like to reserve any of your time for rebuttal.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Don McLean-Toc. I would like to reserve four minutes, if I could, please. I'd like to address three topics in my presentation to you. One, R-10 zone and its role in preserving the integrity of this property, density, and also traffic. Mr. McLaughlin has already well outlined the reasons why this rezone meets the nine approval criteria before you, and I'm not going to repeat everything he says. I do want to address these three because they're ones or matters that came up in our last rezone petition to you, and I think there's reasons why you should vote differently this time. First of all, this property is in the steep slope and higher elevation area that's called out by the Hillside District Plan. And I draw your attention to map 6-6 in the HDP, which shows this parcel within that line of demarcation. The R-10 zone, of course, is uniquely designed to address this sort of development. And it's well worth repeating, Mr. McLaughlin quoted the purpose, that the R-10 district is intended for use, and those areas are natural physical features and environmental factors such as slopes, alpine and forest vegetation, soils, slope stability, and geologic hazards require unique and creative design for development. If you look at the code provision for this zone, it is distinctive from the other ones because it has a long list of things that need to be evaluated under the zone when a subdivision goes forward. If you have bedrock, you have to have the size to deal with septic. If you play back many of the criticisms that have come to this development in the past, the R-10 zone actually is a template to make sure that every one of those is addressed by the Plating Board when the subdivision is presented before it. I anticipate a question. We agree with Mr. McLaughlin that the maximum DUAs of practical matter is about 0.045. When you have the wetlands and all the other constraints to development, we had calculated in the application about 15 more lots could be developed. That, of course, remains to be seen because we have to go through the process. But if there's any ambiguity, and if there's a concern by this body as to what, you know, this is a bait and switch or something like that, we would accept a special limitation that would maximize the total number of lots. And my client has authorized me to say they would accept a special limitation of 25 lots, which is nine more than the conservation wetland that's currently in front of the Plating Board. Now, the reason why the R-10 is important to this really is a matter of efficiency, and that's something under the 2040 Land Use Plan. That is one of the goals. Granted, there are large lots. We have excess raw acreage to supply that land. But that does not mean that you should develop the market or present the market with overly large, inefficient lots, when you have good land that can be developed at densities comparable to the neighborhood, and you have troubled land that should be set aside in wetlands reserves and, you know, larger lots for the slopes. I mean, everything that the R-10 zone is designed to do. So we're not arguing that we're providing more lots because, you know, it's not low-income housing, it's not entry housing. But we are saying that our plan does promote the efficient provision of housing lots. And it is inappropriate to have large lots burdened with the cost of infrastructure, which is not minor. I mean, this is going to have amenities that are different than the neighboring subdivisions, and allow it to be defrayed, provided the lots can support it. And that is what the Plating Board will point out. Now, in terms of density, I think Mr. McLaughlin actually covered that quite well, so I'm not going to repeat it. We clearly fall within the density under the comp plans. Whether you approve this or the Assembly approves it or not, it's still going to be a limited intensity residential zone. We're going to be well within that DUA. And I think Mr. McLaughlin also presented the comparison to the neighbors around that. We're going to be well within, I think, out of the 210 lots that are in the notice map that's in page 10 of your packet, only 30 are larger than 1.25 acres. So this development is not going to be incompatible with the neighborhood. One thing that isn't acknowledged is R-8 is duplex zoning. The lots have to be larger, so you don't get exactly the same number of dwelling units. But if you did a duplex development here, and if economics demanded that you get more dwelling units, you can increase the number of dwelling units. Exactly how much, we haven't laid that out. It's not going to be double, because the lots, I think, have to be six acres instead of four acres. But you get more dwelling units. So the rezone, especially with the limitation that my client just authorized, isn't really imposing that much more dwelling units than what's already here as of right. But what it does do is allow a flexible design that meets market demands and protects the environment. Last point is really just on traffic. Would point out, this is a Collector 1C. We acknowledge the roads in bad shape. I would consider that having more lots, subject to the tax base, would provide more funds to the Lursa to advocate for the improvement of Upper DeArmen. I think, and you can check this with staff, but we believe, we've submitted in the past proceedings, that if this whole area was built out, only 32% of the planned long-term capacity of Upper DeArmen would be utilized. This development itself, standing alone, doesn't even get you to the 2,000 ADT, which is the minimum range of a 1C Collector, which is what Upper DeArmen is. Two parting thoughts. Our Supreme Court has made it clear that rezoning applications are not a popularity contest. I've lived through a few of those in the past, and they're always brutal, and I sympathize with Mr. McLaughlin. But, you know, the task for this body, of course, is to measure application against the code, and I'm sure you will do that.
Would you like to go into your remaining time?
And I'll reserve the remainder of my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for our petitioner?
I think my question may be directed to the staff. There's another action before the Plating Board currently?
Through the chair, Mr. Strike. The Plating Board approved a preliminary plat, and the next step is to record that. But it has been appealed, and so everything is just on hold. And a date hasn't been set for when the Board of Adjustment would hear that appeal.
I'm trying to reconcile the... We were here once before R-8 going to R-6, and now we have... I'm picking up what you had mentioned, that there was another one for the wetlands. Not... I'm using the wrong designation, but there was another alternative designation that was presented and presented. that was presented and proposed that came forth. Is that correct?
There is a, not before this body, there, there was a plat that was approved by the plating board, was the conservation subdivision, which had 20 some acres of tracted out land, wetlands, and other environmental issues. And then the remainder was developed. Of course, under the R-8, that plat had to work off of a four acre template, so you could make the lot smaller, but you had to start with four acres to start with. And candidly, I mean, the R-10 rezone will allow, at this point, nine more lots if, if the body were to impose a special limitation. I think even without that special limitation as a practical matter, it's not going to be more than 30.
And I think that's what's getting lost in all of the conversations. We start out with an R-8 that takes 14 lots. We moved to an R-6 that was looking at 30 to 32 lots. We're looking at a conservation easement or a conservation plat that added, you said nine lots, but then I think you said it added, but then you would settle for 15 more. And now we're up to 25, so we, we've got numbers that, in my opinion, are moving all over the place. I'm just trying to get this bracketed so that we can track.
Sure, and I appreciate that. And maybe if I can clarify, the, the conservation subdivision plat that was approved by the plating board that's under appeal, that was the one that had 16 lots in one tract, and that never came before this body. The R-8 to R-6 rezone that was denied by this body in 2017 had a plat that it sort of drew out under R-6 standards, and I can't actually tell you what the exact number was, but I think it was approximately 30?
Thirty.
32 lots? 32 lots. And the R-10 that we're presenting to you, actually, I think, would come probably if we had no special limitations, would come close to 30, 32, because you have, it does get complicated because you have the wetland setbacks, you have to have drainage way setbacks, you have the wetlands, you have the roads. But my client, I think, has cut through it by saying he would accept a special limitation of 25 if that's the concern of this body.
And then you threw out the comment, but you're authorized here now to accept 15 more, which would be 29.
No, 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 no. No, no, in the, in the application, we said the rezone, that was in Mr. Dryer's application that was in your packet, that the rezone would allow 15 more lots than the R-8 would have. And I think that gets us back up to 29 or 31, depending on how you calculate it.
Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Gardner?
I'm just curious, I don't know if you know the answer, if maybe staff does, but I'm curious, I don't, I'm not that familiar with the details of this property or the history of kind of the zoning here, but I'm wondering if anybody knows, you know, I'm looking at a map here on page 38 of the packet and I see there are a couple of R-10s nearby, and I'm wondering if anybody knows, you know, how it was that this came about as R-8 originally and not R-10? You may well not, I recognize.
Through the chair, Mr. Gardner, the generally area-wide rezonings occurred at different time periods and Anchorage's history. I'm not sure when the, this, where's, when zoning came to this part of the hillside. Some of the older parts of town closer to downtown got their zoning in the 60s and early 70s, and this area, maybe like Chugak Eagle River, in the late 70s. Actually, we have a historical expert on the diocese here, but, so basically, I think what people did is they stood up and said, well, I want my property to be zoned this, and then the Assembly adopted it that way. Yeah, and, and I, I leave myself open as someone else can correct me, but there were area-wide rezones with very, very large areas of miles, and I don't know what thinking went into the R-8 zoning at this property. The way Jerry Weaver, my mentor, explained to me is that people stood up and said what they wanted their zoning to be, and then that's how it was adopted when the original area-wide rezonings happened. Thank you.
Through the chair, may I respond to Mr. Gardner's question as well?
Yes, may I?
Thank you. Through the chair, Mr. Gardner. There is evidence in the record, and this actually came through in the 2014 rezone application, that when this property was originally looked at, there was concern regarding, because it is a high elevation property, it has slopes, it's near an area of quite steep slopes. The concern about the soils, the, the water table, just, just the feasibility of construction at that time, the R-8 zone was an easy one to put into because it was the biggest acreage lot, and that's part of our understanding of how it ended up with that. But I think, like many things in history, there's probably any number of slices you could look at, but that is part of the written record, I believe.
Okay. Do you know if, if at that time, what the R-10 zone looked like, or if that was an option and that was structured roughly the same as it is now?
Through the chair, Mr. Gardner, you know, that was something I wanted to research when the Alpine Slope District Zone was adopted relative to this original R-8, and I'm afraid I don't know the answer. My general memory is it's a later adopted provision, but I couldn't give you the absolute date, especially relative to this initial zone.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments, my commissioners? All right, then I will go ahead and open it up to the public. Again, when you come up to the microphone, state your name, say if you're working on behalf of an organization, and spell your name as well. Also, I'm guessing we have a lot of people here, so feel free to queue up ahead of time if you're able to.
My name is Justin McCaslin, J-U-S-T-I-N, M-C-C-A-S-L-I-N. I live at 8111 Laconia Drive, which is in direct line of sight of the proposed subdivision and also is down slope from the proposed subdivision. So if anybody would be opposed to it, you'd think it would be me. Let me just start by saying this, everyone loves progress, as long as it's their own, okay? There are many here that are opposed to this, they send out letters, they post signs, okay? But I, I did a little research. The person who sent me the last letter lives on a sub acre lot, according to municipal tax records, okay? And I must say, this, this letter that's been sent out on multiple occasions has more logic fallacies than there are grams of fat in a beef parito, okay? I must thank the person though, because it was wonderful fodder for my son's logic class, okay? Now, I am not against this proposed subdivision for three reasons. Number one, it is not a high-density subdivision. There are no high-rise apartment buildings, low-income condominiums, or anything else like that going in, okay? This is something that is backed by current research and that will support this development, okay? And will actually increase the average lot size for the area. As was already mentioned, many lots in the area are sub acre and some even sub half-acre lots, okay? Next thing, this is not a threat to the water table. Because of the soils in the area, all the lots, I believe, on this subdivision will require an Advantix system, okay? Do the research instead of listening to emotional appeals. There are many professionals that say you can drink the water coming out of the other side of an Advantix system, although they don't recommend it, okay? Wells, according to the research on the wells that I've looked at in the area, it's produced between 10 and 20-plus times the minimum flow rate required for residential housing. I don't think it's going to kill it with one more development in the area. Okay, last one, it's not going to ruin the quality of life on the hillside, okay? If that were going to happen, it would have already happened due to developments that have already taken place. And just a comment on the road situation, DeArmen Road is falling apart already. It's not going to increase at any statistically significant amount due to 35 more housing units. So I do support this development by this family. Yes, this is a family developing this. This is not a high-profile careless developer. They will live there. Friends of mine will live there if these lots ever become for sale. I have friends that want to move in next to me because this is a nice place to raise a family. So I would ask you to ignore the appeals to motion or other logical fallacies and support this subdivision, or rezone, excuse me.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Madam Chair, my name is Joel Gaines, J-O-E-L-G-A-I-N-E-S, and today I voice the concerns of our group, the Alliance for Protection of Property Rights and Neighborhood Self-Determination in Potter Valley and Bear Valley. It consists of 61 members representing 114 properties.
Can you speak into the microphone just so we can pick it up on the recording?
Thank you. Better now?
Yes.
Okay. We represent 61 members, 114 properties, 1,771 acres, and 31.8 million in assessed tax value located in South Anchorage. With due respect to this body, most of our members do not have the time to attend every meeting such as community council, HLB, AMAT, Historic Preservation Planning, Assembly, Chugat Street Park, Trails, and Planning and Zoning, which may impact our property rights, so we came together at a grassroots level in an attempt to make our position heard while sharing the burden of this effort. We specifically request the Planning and Zoning Commission consider the petitioner's big country enterprises rezoning request in accordance with Title 21 and the Anchorage land use plans. Our alliance believes that the commission should primarily consider fact-based information and data and not be unduly influenced by conjecture and false or unsubstantiated claims from groups and individuals that is contrary to documented evidence. Additionally, while not specific to this hearing, we're concerned about the establishment of public trailheads and parking lots on public land near private properties, residences, and within neighborhoods. These trailheads have a documented history of evolving into illegal trespass onto adjacent private land and leading to the disruption of quiet neighborhood environments enjoyed by those who invested their lives and life savings to live in a rural setting. This issue is especially important where public properties are surrounded by private property with no viable access to public park land without crossing private properties as exist with some Heritage Land Bank properties. In conclusion, we stand for protecting the property rights of every private property owner and for the right of current or future residents to self-determine the character of their neighborhood while respecting the rights of others around them. Our group seeks to be included as a stakeholder in public decision-making processes where any of our members' properties may be impacted. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
May I please, the chair, my name's Mark June, that's spelled J-U-N-E. I live at 8801 Upper DeArmen, across the street from this land. This has been a four-year process. An application for a 32-lot rezone was denied in 2016, entabled by the Assembly under old Title 21 to allow refiling. Rezoning based on 30 lots was denied in 2017. Rezoning based on 24 lots was denied in 2017. At the community meeting, they said they wanted to develop up to 45 lots. Tonight, they tell you it's 25, which is one more than 24 lot subdivision denied one year ago. It's my, what I'd like to address my thoughts to is the application should be denied based on non-compliance with the new Title 21 procedures, specifically the 12-minute community meeting that was supposed to take place before filing the application and 2103-160-D10's two-year waiting period following the last denial. That's a legal question. As a matter of law, the question is whether it's the same project and did they do it within two years? I raised these issues months ago, only to learn on, that on Friday, I'm sorry, on May 25, the day of staff's report to you, the developer had asked for a decision that the two-year time period didn't apply and could only be re-triggered by Assembly rezoning denial, like under old 21. On Friday, I learned that staff agreed with this position, and that was the first notice to the public. I tried to deliver a response today. I have copies with me, I was told it was given to you, and I, at the end, I'd like to make sure that that happened. But that response explains why staff's position is legally indefensible. By the plain language of the ordinance, the ordinance removed the assembly trigger to prevent developers from gaming the system, just like has been done in this application, and having do-overs like this one. More disturbing to me is that neither staff nor the developer gave notice of the letter, even though just last week I'd been in communication with the developer's lawyer. More disturbing is the public had no notice of the developer's letter and no ability to respond, and that is a legal question that affects all zoning applications. More disturbing is that the developer himself attended a public hearing last week and when asked repeated questions about the development, he chose to say no comment several times. This is an identical request for smaller-sized lots greater than allowed by existing zoning. I would suggest to you that the practice of sending a secret letter, the practice of sending out a memo agreeing with the secret letter is not transparent. Thank you very much, I request denial.
Thank you.
Can I make sure, did you get the letter I sent today?
Staff, was that included in our supplemental packet?
Yes, it is.
We already have a copy of it.
Can I leave it with staff?
I've got a question.
Before you start, we do have a question from one of our commissioners for Mr. June. Mr. Strike?
What were some of the questions that you were attempting to ask that received no comments to?
I'm sorry?
What were some of the questions that were asked that you received no comments to in the last hearing from the developer?
The, there was a HALO meeting the other night.
Okay. What meeting? You said, you said that there were a number of questions that you asked the developer, that were asked of the developer?
No, 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 no. I misspoke, if that's your understanding. There, there was a HALO meeting last week, and during the HALO meeting, the HALO board asked the developer more than once to explain what the project was all about, and more, approximately three to four times, the developer's response to that request was to say he had no comment.
Okay.
That's, that's what I was intending to communicate. Is that more clear?
That's a little bit more clear than what you had stated.
Great, I was getting rattled, I apologize.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Carl Portman, and I have lived directly above the applicant's parcel for the past 40 years. The petitioner's R-8 application for a 16 plat, for a 16-lot plat has been approved. This R-8 conservation subdivision is a significant step in the right direction, and I support the R-8 development of the parcel. There is a general consensus that the conservation subdivision can work with some enhancements to minimize the impact of, on the neighborhood and movement of wildlife. Tweaking the plat could also help mitigate drainage and issues on the property. The applicant knows about my belief that a private meeting could lead to resolution of issues with the conservation subdivision. However, they have been unwilling to meet until after the commission's decision tonight. That said, I am opposed to the R-10 rezone because the approval of the application could potentially triple the number of homes from the maximum allowed under R-8. That excess density would fundamentally change the wild character of the area because the greatest density of new houses would be clustered along Upper DeArmen, directly adjacent to the neighborhood. The Lewis and Clark parcel was originally zoned R-8 to create the lowest housing density, retain open space, and reduce drainage issues. Many of the existing small R-6 lots in the neighborhood were created before adequate zoning laws were in place. A number of those lots have ongoing drainage issues with springs that run all year and gla, glaciation. Malfunctioning septic systems are common, and many wells in the neighborhood have very limited water flow, including mine, where we can't water our lawns during the summer. In my comments in 2017 on the R-6 application, I submitted climate data outlining snowfall and annual precipitation from my weather records, which date back to 1978. Studies commissioned by the applicants occurred following seasons of unusually low snowfall ranging from 52 to 72% below average. Snowfall this winter was just 50% of the seasonal average at this location. If snowfall was average or above average the winters preceding the studies, the conclusions may have verified just how wet this parcel is. Quoting from P&amp;Z Resolution 27021, quote, "The groundwater will vary from year to year based on snowfall." All other All other factors that were problems approximately two years ago with compatibility impacts to drainage, glaciation, and downstream water courses all seem to be there," end quote. In summary, the Lewis and Clark parcel was purchased by the applicant knowing that it was zoned R-eight. The rezon applications for twenty-six to thirty-two lots have been recommended for denial. The newest rezon is for as many as forty-five lots. I urge the commission to reject this R-ten rezon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Joan Priestley, that's P-R-I-E-S-T-L-E-Y. I live at one-three-one-zero-one Genie Road. I have done some research on the legal standards for rezoning. There is, there is a strong legal presumption that the original zoning of an area is well-planned and is designed to be permanent. This provides security and continuity for the landowners. Our courts have declared several elements that must be proven to obtain a rezon. Number one, the original zoning was clearly a mistake or was not reasonable. The applicants have never raised this issue. Or, number two, the character of the neighborhood has changed to such an extent that rezoning is justified. This neighborhood hasn't changed much in forty years. Or, number three, the property is barely economically viable or not viable at all with the present zone. The Plating Board has approved the R-eight project with sixteen lots, so clearly, this, this parcel already has a good economic benefit under the current R-eight zoning. So in this case, none of these three necessary elements has been proven, and the request should be denied. There is also a fourth element, sufficient public need. At twenty-one-point-oh-three-point-oh-six-oh-E, the first mandatory condition to, to, to meet reads, "The rezoning shall be in the best interest of the citizens of Anchorage." This request fails to meet that standard. The financial chart that I sent with my written comments shows that even the small lots here will need about two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars just to get the land ready for a house. This R-ten plan will really do nothing to address the need in Anchorage for truly affordable, centrally-located housing. In fact, in your resolution of two, twenty-seventeen-point-oh-two-eight dash-oh-two-eight, you already found that, quote, "Increasing density at this site is contrary to the public interest." Anchorage does not need more large, large-lot housing. That's part of your, your finding. Twenty-one-point-oh-four-point-oh-two-oh imposes a fifth mandate. It states that an R-ten zone must be required, that is necessary. With the current R-eight project in place, clearly, this is not the case. This R-ten rezon also fails to conform to the Hillside District Plan, Policy One-A, which discourages increased density in areas like this that are removed from city services and infrastructure. Your twenty-fifteen-dash-oh-two-six resolution found that, quote, "What is needed is more compact development near employment centers."
Thank you for your time.
This resolution does not meet that goal, and I urge that you, that you deny it.
Sorry to cut people off, but we will have a lot of people speaking, so-
That's fine.
So no questions if the next person can come to the mic.
Good evening. My name is Pat Dougy, that's spelled D-O-U-G-H-E-R-T-Y. I'm here tonight to oppose this rezoning. It's right across the street from my house. The point I want to make tonight is I, I just find the public process here very peculiar. Applicants want a rezon from R-eight to R-ten, but they won't say, at least they won't tell the community what it is they want to do. Should a, shouldn't a public consideration begin with disclosure of what we're supposed to consider? Last Thursday, I was struck, as was Mark June, at this HALO meeting where the rezoning came up. Lots of people there wanted to talk about it. The applicant was present. When he asked to describe the project, he literally answered, "No comment." At a Hillside Community Council meeting on May twenty-third, the project was on the agenda, the applicants were present, and they refused to answer questions about it. In February, the official presentation of the rezoning application to the community council was twelve minutes long. That included the Q and A and provided exactly one fact, a subdivision of five to forty-five houses. So I ask you, how are we, the public, supposed to meaningfully engage in this process? Is it helpful for you to know that I'm fine with five, ten, or fifteen houses, but opposed to twenty, thirty, or forty-five? I don't know what they're going to do. Apparently, we just found out tonight, we're talking about twenty-five homes. I wish I'd known that. So, and, and I can tell you that I think the minimum lot size should remain four acres, but it's, it has no context because I don't understand their project. I think this refusal to tell us what they plan is simply a strategy to undermine the public process. As we've seen, when these applicants say what they want to do, they get denied, first by the Planning Department, three times by this commission, once by the Anchorage Assembly. So here am I obliged to comment on this stealth rezon. I'll bet, having said that, I'll bet it's the same project they've been pushing for four years. Twice as many houses is allowed under current zoning, smaller lots than allowed under current zoning, and all stacked along Upper DeArmen Road. It ignores the Hillside District Plan, kists off documented soil and water issues, and discounts the opposition of every single neighbor, with the exception of one I heard a moment ago. Heck, if the applicants were required to follow the law, we wouldn't even be having this hearing for another fourteen months. So I urge you to reject, for the fourth time, rezoning this tract, for all the same reasons plus one. The public process is being compromised, and you should not accept that.
Thank you.
Jonathan Stinson, S-T-I-N-S-O-N. Not with me are, is my wife and two young daughters, due to them being two and four and acting like two and four-year-olds. I'm a lifelong Alaskan. I've lived outside of Alaska twice, once for entry, elementary-level training with the United States Marine Corps, and once to go to law school. Don't hold that against me. I don't think lawyers are going to get a lot of love tonight, but I came tonight because I've a little bit familiar with the project, I've seen the area. I just want to showcase myself as, I am the type of prospective buyer that would be interested should this rezoning get approved. I don't think I could afford a four-acre lot, so I don't think the current zoning is, is compatible for a young business professional, even with two incomes. However, with rezoning, this is definitely something that my wife and I are considering and interested in, and I just, again, want to present myself as the type of person that would be neighbors to some of the concerned folks here. I think you'll find that we're responsible and would be a benefit to the community. With that, I would also like to add and point out the fact, a lot of folks in my age group, early thirties, are looking north, they're moving to Palmer-Wassilla, simply because of the affordability. Now, I know there's been some back and forth about whether this is affordable, whether it's not. I, again, highlight myself, young professional, as somebody that would be interested in this property, could afford this property, again, with the rezoning, not as-is. So I do think it is affordable. It's especially suitable for somebody who's interested in being close enough to the business market. Obviously, that's important, that's going to be Anchorage. However, I grew up in the woods, and I like that character and that flavor that it sounds like everybody else here who's concerned also enjoys. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Cal Dunham, that's D-U-N-H-A-M, and basically, I'm here simply to encourage the commission to look favorably on this request for rezon. I took the liberty to walk that property just a few days ago because I wanted to see what all this hullabaloo was all about, and it's a beautiful piece of property. And so I started doing some research, and I started looking at lot sizes around and so on, and I defer to Mr. McLaughlin. The things that I found are exactly what I, what he spoke of, and that's why I'm supportive of this. I think it's a wonderful opportunity for families and for, for homes. I guess just one, one thing I want to say is when I was walking on this property, I found no place where building a home that, I guess, could not go any higher than thirty feet was going to obstruct, obstruct somebody else's view, create something negative that was going to be distasteful for someone else. But I must add that what I've heard, say several times tonight, is, I live just across the street from where this piece of property is. Well, and they're on the negative side of it. So I'm, I'm just concerned about that. I came to Alaska, so I had the freedom to live and build and do what I wanted to do, and I'm just a whacked-out Vietnam vet enjoying my life in Alaska, and I've been here for thirty, forty years now. But in closing, I would just simply say that I would really encourage the commission to look favorably upon this request. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mark Larson, last name is L-E-R-S-O-N. I just wanted to say that this eighty-acre parcel being developed by the families that make up big country enterprises, I'm in favor of. I think it's constructable, I think it's a good use of the property, and I like the concept of the R-ten zoning, the twenty-five lots I learned about is, sounds nice to me. I've been in this town since nineteen ninety-three. I'm an experienced builder, I've been involved in building lots of homes in Anchorage. I've seen many developments go up around town, some good, some bad, and from what I've heard and seen, I think this one is a good one. I do understand what it's like to be the people living adjacent to this area and that they're opposed to it, but I think this is a responsible development. I can vouch personally for the families and the individuals that make up the group that's doing this development. I think they're people of good character, they care about what they're doing, and they're trying to do it in the best way and in a way that honors the surrounding area. I also have a son, raising a young family in this town, and the lower-density lots are unaffordable for him. I know he's interested in building on some of these lots, and the little higher density just makes it more affordable to, to build. With the high cost of land development in Anchorage, I personally think it's wrong to punish developers who are willing to risk their own money, their own savings, and by not allowing them to advance a project that is fiscally and environmentally sustainable. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Diane Holmes. Déjà vu. I'm very surprised to be here for the third time. The conservation subdivision plat that was approved by Plating is ideal for this challenged parcel. I believe the appeals board will agree, and I urge you to condition your decision tonight based on their decision. A large part of the cost of development is roads. R-eight was definitely uneconomical because three-hundred-foot-wide lots would be required. So too is R-ten, where a hundred feet is required, as I understand. Conservation subdivision has lots that I think are much smaller. Perhaps the developers believe that thirty or forty lots in the proposed R-ten, that the road cost would be justified. One real question here is, should you be upholding the adopted plans? The Hillside District Plan, like other neighborhood plans, was adopted with more specific details than 2020. While staff justified approval by quoting some 2020 policies, such as Condition Number Two, the HDP policies can't be trumped by 2020 nor 2040. Yet, critical HDP policies were ignored and distorted. HDP Policies One, B, and C are very clear that the Upper Hillside shall remain with the current land use designations and zoning, no matter whether you consider this area to be in central or southeast area. Policies say, remain the current zoning. Neither should you be influenced by the adjacent non-conforming lots, which would not be allowed today. R-ten will result in a higher density, just as the failed R-ten rezon would have. If the Rabbit Creek Council voted for R-ten last year, it was out of ignorance as to how dense R-ten can be with slopes of less than twenty percent. If you are a developer, you may approve of the staff report. If you are a planner, you wonder how staff could have made their decision. But I feel the most egregious of the staff statements are the Hillside District Plan's map that allows for this rezon. This tiny map covers a huge area that merges several policies due to color and size limitations. In no way should the rezones be determined by looking at this map. The legend with its combined districts cannot automatically grant development at the highest density per category. If that were so, then thirty-five DUA could be developed in Goldenview Park. Don't ignore the years of work and costs that went into the Hillside District Plan. Bill Green's legal opinion during Wirth's administration stated our comp plan and its elements was a legal document to be developed. The criteria for this rezon have not been met.
Thank you.
Is it acceptable, Curtis Spencer, S-P-E-N-C-E-R? I live on Michael Road in DeArmen. I'm all for progress, that's a great thing, but I do have concerns. First of all, this is the first time that I've been to any of these meetings because I work constantly and have not been able to make these meetings. So I see that we do have a current developer that sits on the Assembly Board, and I know him. That's concerning to me, as you all vote through the process. Are there any other developers that sit on the Assembly Board besides Mr. Spinelli?
I would just like to remind the individual that we have gone through disclosures at the beginning of the meeting, and we found that no one had any disclosures they make, which would reveal if they had any personal or financial interest in this project.
Perfect. So, one of the questions that I have is, I'm okay with the building part, keep it whatever, however it works, but throughout this entire process, after listening and talking to everybody, I've heard nothing about the fire plans, evacuation routes. It's all beetle kill. The road's horrible. How many of you have driven it? Fix it. Fix it. Okay, I drive it every day. Right? I mean, it's bad, it's sloughing off, needs to be rebuilt. You know, maybe while you're doing that, you should put in a city sewer. That would prevent, that would help the project tremendously. Right? Probably highly unlikely, but if anything ever, any fires happen up there, it's, it's a big deal, and people are gonna probably not do too well. If you drive up there in the evening, you have people walking up and down the road. Every night, every day, all day long, people are walking up and down the roads. There's nowhere to get away from the traffic. Again, I am for progress, I am for building, but typically, we have to make it safe to do so. And the only, the only evacuation route is through Genie, which has lost its eminent domain, and there's no maintenance on it anymore. So if there's a fire anywhere in there, you're stuck there. And I think that should be considered. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name's Gail Morrison. I have some maps. Is it okay if I hand them up?
Yes.
Okay.
And if you happen to have an extra one, if we could take that for our staff pack at the end to file?
Hello, everyone. My name is Gail Morrison. I live at 8600 Spinlove Drive, about 400 feet northeast of the applicant's parcel. I oppose the R10 rezone request by big country enterprise for the following reasons. One, this application is very similar to the application that was denied last year with a few minor changes, such as R8 is now R10. Two, I will reiterate the same information that I have stated in the past, that the Lewis and Clark parcel is mostly unsuitable for building on small lots. And two, and in this map, you can see, this is all Muni data, by the way, and there are five drainage areas, not one. This is drainage area map, data from the Muni. The only data on this map that is not Muni data is the site not suitable for development or site most likely not suitable for development. That, those polygons came from Garnett Engineering. In 2015, Garnett Engineering was hired by S4 Group to provide a soils investigation report. This report stated that four lots were not suitable for development and another lot was most likely not suitable for development. Garnett Engineering is no longer involved in the project. Now the lots are, the lots, the lots are now miraculously suitable for development. Number three, the number of lots within the R6 rezone, the R6 zone in our neighborhood in the Long Upper DeArmond have been experiencing drainage and septic problems resulting in glaciation of the road, which makes it very difficult and scary to drive on, installation of second septic systems, hauling of potable water, and lowering of well pressures. Additional homes will continue to cause stress on the local infrastructure and environment at our expense. The applicant has stated that Anchorage is in need of larger homes. This is untrue. During a Halo meeting last week, Assemblyman Weddleton spoke of Anchorage's demographics. He mentioned that the younger people are moving out of state for better paying jobs and other reasons. Alaska has a large aging population, many of us wanting to downsize both house size and other aspects of our lives. A recent bill was passed allowing those wanting to downsize their living space to build a small dwelling greater than or, less than or equal to 900 square feet on their land. The downsizer can live in this small dwelling while renting out their larger home, or perhaps allowing their children to live in a larger home. Five, there are over 232 parcels of land available right now with price, prices ranging from $85,000 to, $85,000 and higher all over Anchorage. Sizes range from .11. I oppose.
Hello. Joe McGee, M C G H E E. I'm a firefighter with the Anchorage Fire Department. My wife is a teacher with the Anchorage School District and we have three kids, all under the age of five. And for the last 10 years, we've been living on East Side Anchorage with the goal to ultimately purchase a house on the hillside community, just to be close to family and friends. So the last five years, we've kind of been saving up and gearing towards that. What we've found is the, the houses that we looked at seemed to be overvalued for what they were. Didn't really feel like the value was there. So we kind of shifted gears and started leaning towards more on building a home to kind of maximize our dollar and kind of get what we needed. The problem we've found when looking for lots, yes, there are $85,000 lots, but they all have problems. There's drainage issues. They're too steep. They're overpriced. So because of this, we decided that we needed to, we just, we want to build a home, but none of the lots seem to work out. With this rezoning taking it to four acres down to acre and a quarter, it makes it more affordable for a middle-class family like myself, my family, to raise, to raise my young family and, you know, have a lifestyle like the, all the members of the hillside community have right now. So I hope that you rezoned R10. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sandy Cunningham, S A N D Y C U N N I N G H A M. My husband and I both live in South Anchorage right now, in the Independence Park area with a young daughter. And we are hardworking medical professionals, very respectful, and are looking to appeal or vote with this, yes. The purpose of the Hillside District Plan is to establish a sound public policy that reflects the vision of the hillside residents and landowners and the interests of the full community of Anchorage. The plan must address both current needs and future growth. The primary challenge of the Hillside District Plan is to protect the qualities that both the residents and the users of the area value about the hillside while accommodating future development. Although I applaud the merits of the Hillside District Plan, please let me tell you how this affects me personally. As a lifelong native Alaskan woman, born into a small homesteader cabin on Third Avenue, and now a millennial by default, I realize the narrow interpretation of the Hillside District Plan here tonight, along with the opposition to this rezone, leaves me on the outside. I am absolutely tired of being left out of matters that affect who I am as a woman, a native, a millennial, and a lifelong Alaskan, and a potential Lewis and Clark homeowner of a 1.25 to 2 acre lot. Hats off to my parents' generation, your generation, my grandparents' generation, and the homesteaders. They led the way. Unfortunately, they could not predict that my generation, the millennials, are truly locked out of the hillside unless your parents are leaving you a large inheritance, you happen to be in the upper 1%, or you've won the lottery. And I don't have any of these three. I've personally walked this property with my husband. I've looked at the plans and I've talked to the owners about pricing. I'd love to see my daughter have the opportunity to grow up here, in the beautiful outdoors, enjoying scenery and respecting the community. What a beautiful place it is, and yet unfortunately, I'm shut out again. I want this beautiful Hillside District Plan to be inclusive. Stop locking me and my family out just because we can't afford a four acre lot. Don't point us to the so-called glut of large parcels of land that turn out to be unbuildable on, have no access, or are garbage pieces that no one wants to buy. It's about time that the GNA family thought enough about me, about women, millennials, future generations, and just not about today. Drive up there, see who's complaining. 85% of them are not, are on a less than a one acre of land. They're the haves and they want me to be the have-not. I repeat, the primary challenge of the Hillside District Plan is to protect the qualities that both residents and users of the area value about the hillside while accommodating future development. Please don't lock me out again. Thank you.
Thank you. And before we get our next commenter, could I get a show of hands on how many more people are still hoping to testify on this issue? All right. Thank you. The next person can come up. And if some of those other 10 people can start queuing up so we can speak things through, that'd be very helpful.
All right. I'll make mine short. I've testified numerous times already. I, I want to know, when are we going to stop this? This is BS what we're doing now. We've dug this out so many times.
Before you start, can you say your name?
My name is Ralph Warren. R A L P H W A R R E N. I live at 7901 Upper DeArmond.
Thank you so much.
Now, every time that we get close to having this thing shut down, they look the other way and here we go again. It's the same old thing tonight. No new evidence of what they're trying to do. I was there when the guy made his statement that he had no comment. That's pretty sorry. If you worked for me, I'd fire him. So you have it in your hands to be able to do something tonight. If you do it wrong, you'll be putting sewer lines up there for them. You'll be putting water for them. And you'll also be polluting Rabbit Creek. It's gonna happen. It's a sad story that that's where it has to be, but I think they need to be told, go back and buy them a town down south somewhere. We don't want them for a neighbor. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Rob Brown and I live with my family just downhill on Canyon Road from the proposed rezone. I've also been authorized to speak for Elaine Mills, the owner of the 80 acres directly south of the property, who said, "We are opposed to any development that increases the density of that property." We have not been informed on any of the applicant's plans other than R10 can mean between 5 and 45 lots. I attended two Hillside Community Council meetings. We got zero information of the applicants. I don't understand how that can suffice for the requirement that they inform the community of their project's detail before presenting it here. However, in their application on page six, they state, quote, "This rezoning would allow approximately 15 more lots than the existing zoning." This translates to approximately 31 houses. So that means we are looking at the same rezone attempt as in 2017. How is that a different application from the 2017-072 application? Where is that explained and where has the public been able to view this determination? Just because it is R10 does not make it different. Are we to expect that once a year, they can switch between R6 and R10 applications until they get it approved? In their current application, Criteria 6 traffic and Criteria 7 are near exact copy and paste of their 2017 application. For instance, in 2017, they said, increase in impervious, quote, "Increase in impervious area is also minimal, increasing from 3.3% impervious to, under R8 zoning, to 6.1% impervious with an R6 development." Guess what? Replace R8 with R10 and they said the exact same thing on this application. Why is it that the same amount of impervious area down to a tenth of a percent the same? Because it's the same plan, the same number of houses as in 2017, and this application should not have been allowed until the two-year timeline is up, as dictated in Anchorage Municipal, Municipal Code. This is a group that has already had an appeal shot down after they claimed new information, and you all agreed it was not new information. Well, this is not a new plan either, and it should be denied. I request a specific finding of fact from you all as to the legality of this, of the proposed rezone and in regards to the two-year wait line, wait limit. There's also, you know, there's already an approved R8 conservation subdivision on this property. It's currently under appeal because many neighbors have, believe the rule of law should be followed and the Plating Board has led to believe things that just weren't true. We as neighbors have reached out to the applicants to work with them on the issues in the appeal and have not, not had any commitment, only the applicants passing on deciding whether they will meet until after your decision here tonight. The truth was stated by the applicants at the Hillside Community Council when they said, "The appeal of the R8 conservation subdivision drove the R10 application. Good planning did not drive them and not what's best in the interest of Anchorage and our neighborhood." I've, I'm not going to repeat what's always already been said. We should not be here today. The developer has not followed the rules. The planning department should not have allowed this hearing. Rezoning is wrong and has always been wrong. There are three previous decisions by this body against it and those same reasons for denial are still the same right now. Rezoning should be denied and the developer and planning department told to obey Title 21. Thank you.
Good evening. Angie Peterkin, P E T E R K I N. I just want to say that I fully support this. There's more young families that need homes that they'd like to enjoy the opportunity to grow and build on this property. I mean, people who built their homes before on this area, they had to cut down trees. They had to put houses there. They, they had, why should they have been given the right and not somebody else like our kids or other young families that want to be living on the hillside? I think it's a wonderful opportunity. Yes, it's going to be more crowded. Yes, there's going to be some issues with wells. I live on the hillside east. I have issues. But it's, people can be happy and get along and support other people and want the best for other people in this world. I mean, we don't always have to be greedy and just accept the fact that we're going to be growing and we're going to have new neighbors sometimes, even though we don't like it. I mean, yes, the road's going to be busier. It's going to be more damaged at times. But where in Anchorage is there a good road that doesn't get damaged every year from whatever? So I think it's a great idea and I hope it goes through. I love all the people involved. I love all the people that are, I mean, I can totally see the other side, too. It's difficult. But let's stop fighting with one another and just let it happen. It'd be a great place. I mean, and all these signs that ruin my hiking path every year. I hope those go away soon, too. It's like, support people. Take down your ugly signs, too. Thanks.
My name is Carol Ashlock and I'm speaking also for Loki Friedman at 13921 Bonnie Elaine Road. The property, along with the Mills, it's not an undeveloped property, 80 acres. It belongs to someone. It belongs to a family that homesteaded, like many of these people that homesteaded over 50 years ago. Unlike the, some of the new folks around that don't know why something was zoned, they were zoned for a reason. They were all zoned for a reason. Anyway, I, I need to have an eye surgery, so please bear with me. It's kind of hard for me to read some of the things I have, but I'm listening to everything that's being said. Most of the support is more emotional. We hear about the families. We hear about the kids. You could hear about my kids, grandkids, whatever. But the people that are opposed to it aren't talking about a nimby knot in my backyard. The group has tried, made efforts to meet, to try to work together. They're specific. They're specific points. They're specific points about well and septic and all these different things. They're not emotional pleas. They're honest facts. Honest facts is, are that those lots are going to be $150,000, $200,000 apiece before well and septic are put in. We've put the well and septic in young families. Let's see you even be able to do that. We know what it costs. And those wells over there were like 250 feet deep. Glaciation, got an area this big, it's already being caused. We looked at that property ourselves, my own family. It's not buildable. Some of it's 400 foot drop. It's Class C wetlands. There's a reason that land was so cheap to We speak of wells. We speak of septic. Everybody jumps Avantix. You know, some of you guys are not the same people that were here before. So I will say, for the Avantix, the Avantix people won't come up there because they don't work. People exactly to the west, on Upper DeArmond, several houses down, the Rowleys and other families, Ancox, their systems don't work. Those guys won't support it anymore. And in fact, the soils are so bad, their septic tanks pop up above ground. So they have above-ground septic and they'd spend about $1,200 a month to have those pumped out. But not big families even. That's the level of use. So that's what you're looking at getting into over there. I think this group of people are trying to be responsible. We're not even talking about other issues with soils that have not been demonstrated. The gentleman that spoke for the Mills family has a, has a commercial well as well, very, very high standards, looking at the nitrates and so forth. Of course, the winter before last, they chose to dig wells. Who digs a well in the summer, in the winter time? But they did. Did monitor them. They busted. Over 300, 400,000 gallons flooded. Most, some of you guys know that, but nobody seemed to care. People around lost, lost their wells in the winter time, about 10%. They dropped. Now somebody else is going to stand up here and say, oh, well, that's not true. Or I'm just the new attorney on the case and I know all the history, except for the R10 zoning. But the things that these people are bringing up are actual facts. Thank you very much. I hope you'll consider a denial of this and get them on the right track. Thank you.
My name is Mary Lee. I live at 8701 Spinlove Drive. I've lived there for 22 years. My husband was an engineer up until he died. And I have lived in Anchorage since mid 50s. I was here when these nice people signed up or were appointed to the original board that set up the planning and zoning laws. They took into consideration many documents from the Corps of Engineers, from engineers in town, and from many other places. They did not willy-nilly say, okay, this is this, this is that, this is something else. Meanwhile, in some areas up here on the hillside, people people had homesteaded. And it's those properties that have different sizes than the R8 that the rest of us are living under. And, you know, they had good ideas at the time. We all voted on it. It was accepted. And now it's constant meat picking, change this, change that. And it's been going on for four years and enough is enough.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman, my name is Mark Morrison, M-A-R-K-M-O-R-R-I-S-O-N. I live on Upper Spin Love. I'm speaking, if I may, for Buster Bryant, whose health does not permit him to be here tonight. Is that okay? Okay. Mr. Bryant would like you to know, and that's Buster, B-U-S-T-E-R-B-R-Y-A-N-T, says, "I realize I missed last Friday's deadline, but I wanted to try and get my comments on record. I've written comments for previous iterations of this proposed subdivision and I agree with most of my neighbors' views. What I have not been able to find is data on perk tests and well flow rates. How many, if any, perk tests have been done and in what areas of the plot on a grid at random or high graded in sweet spots? The same questions apply to test wells. To soil types, wetlands and probable Linsoid discontinuous aquifers, some lot owners will probably get caught in a perfect storm of environmental problems, poor surface drainage, failing perk tests and high water table and low productivity wells. What happens when or if this scenario materializes to the lot owners in the subdivision? I have personally experienced both these things, fail septic and low productivity wells in similar soils, Bear Valley and our current house on Spin Love. In Bear Valley, a holding tank was the only option at the time and our property value was halved. Unfortunately, excuse me, fortunately, our current lot had enough space for a second system, but it was very expensive. Neither of these potential outcomes is appealing for anyone, but especially not for large houses in a new subdivision. Finally, I believe that several practical issues, including those mentioned above, that affect the quality of life of everyone in the Upper Rabbit Creek Valley have not been sufficiently addressed by the applicants, not to mention the currently unresolved earlier application and therefore I request this application be denied." Also, he would like the council to know that both the Hillside Commission and Halo, the vote count against the R10 rezon for the HCC was 17 to 1 against and 19 to 0 against for the Halo. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Steve McDonald. Last name is M-A-C-D-O-N-A-L-D. I live on Upper DeArmond Road. We've lived up there for 25 years now and we do live across the street from the proposed development. I'm not a NIMBY. I've always known that this land could be purchased and could be developed and always lived with that realization. And that's what Big Country Development has, has done. And Big Country was well aware of what the zoning of that land was when it purchased that parcel. And all I'm asking is that they play under those rules. They bought the land fair and square, that's fine. It was zoned a certain way and it should be developed that same way. Don't change the rules. This board, the Assembly, other city leaders worked for years to come up with a set of zoning laws to develop Anchorage responsibly and to protect communities, neighborhoods, business districts. All I ask is that you abide by those rules. Don't let them change them. Because if you change them now, another developer will come by someplace else in another parcel and perhaps want to change them again. Just stick to your guns. That's all I ask. They bought the land fair and square. They seem like good people. They know what the zoning was when they bought it and that's what they should do to develop it. And Mr. McGlaughlin, just, I haven't been to all the meetings. I've been to most of them and I think I heard, I may have misheard this, that the Rabbit Creek Group supports this project. I think that's what I heard you say. If not, please correct me. But I've been to most of the meetings and none of those, there were votes at many of those community council meetings, including the Halo meeting last week, all overwhelmingly against this project. There are a few people up there that I've run into that support the project. Most are against it. And, and it's not about trying to shut people out or keep people from moving into the neighborhood. It is a great quality of life. We just want it done right. Thanks very much for the opportunity.
Thank you. And then again, if some of the other people who are, still have to speak, if you can start to kind of line up to speed things up.
Good evening. My name is Nathan Austin, A-U-S-T-I-N. My address is 4700 East 147th Avenue. I was active duty here for us for a little over 20 years. I'm now retired and I'll be starting UAA nursing this fall. I love Anchorage and I don't ever plan on leaving. I have to admit, I think the opposition here may have missed who these developers are. They are my father-in-law and mother-in-law, my wife's parents, as well as my brother-in-law and sister. My wife's parents have lived in Anchorage for more than 35 years and have been consistently involved in the community from the beginning. They love the people of Anchorage and highly favor family values, as well as fair opportunities for all peoples. My wife's sister, Alicia Brownson, is, is one of a handful of critical burn surgeons working at AMMC. And her husband, Todd Brownson, is a civil engineer from Montana with loads of experience in making roads. He recently laid down Sea Tax Runway, as well as the Fairchild Air Force Base Extremely Long Runway. He knows how to build roads. These guys are here to stay and they've been actively involved in the community as soon as they hit the ground here. It is unfortunate that the opposition here hasn't taken the opportunity to get to know them like I do. My family's idea for this land development has been a family project from the beginning and unfortunately, the opposition missed that point. These are normal, everyday Alaskans, just like you and me, who want to make a difference. Did you ever notice not one real estate agent or big-name developer has been involved in this property? That's because it's about families and for families. I personally have been on this wonderful piece of property multiple times. And with the exception of the steep sloping edges, it's, it's generally very flat, full of alpine characteristics, abundant in spruce and birch, and it's mostly dry. On a good day, peeking through the trees, you might be able to see a neighbor about a quarter of a mile away. It's my opinion that the opposing neighbors are missing a huge opportunity. Instead of understanding who this family is and their goal of making this property a community for families, they're missing out on an incredible opportunity to make a difference in both young families and old families, as well as an opportunity to make this great city greater than it already is. In closing, I wish that you would rezon to R10 so that my family could afford one of these 1.5-acre lots. I can't afford a 4-acre lot. And future opportunities for other families. This city is great. I think people need to swallow their emotion and approve this so that we can have more families move up on the hillside. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Yvonne Spencer. I live off of Michael Road. I've lived there for 20 years now. Moved in right on the corner. One of the things that I'm kind of most frustrated with, I made the May hearing or the board meeting and one of the things there, this first one, gone to since I've lived there for 20 years. My husband usually does that stuff. There was no, they refused, Flat refused to answer point-blank questions of what's your estimated value of a piece of property? What are you going to price it at? Don't know that yet. If you're going into a multi-million dollar project, there's no way you don't know what that piece of property you have in mind to price that piece of property at. The piece of property adjoining us has been for sale, exactly two acres, basically. It's been for sale for the 20 years that I have lived on this piece of property. My husband previously had. Just sold. And it was funny, the young man I spoke with described everything that these people talked about and he actually knew these people. And that's why they talked, he felt they tucked him into buying this piece of property. It was for silver, $219,000 is what it's been listed for, for quite some time. As a young person, I never could have afforded a piece of property like that. So I don't know how these pieces of property are going to be affordable for the average young couple or just starting-out family and such as that. I think that's quite a fallacy there. Considering they were point-blankly asked what the prices were going to be, they would not tell us. They wouldn't tell us anything. And that was something that I found very, very extremely frustrating, knowing I'm for growth, I don't have a problem, but I live on hillside because of space and because of the freedom of walking the road, walking my dogs, playing with my dogs, letting my dogs play in the yard, the freedom of that. And I've seen other areas that have been developed. I don't like to look into someone's window outside my window. That's why I live there. Those are all valued things and that's why the majority of the people you've talked to have been there for 20 years plus. And why should our hard work and our efforts be ruined because someone would like to make a bunch of money off of a piece of property and ruin the street? That will increase. If you just think about 25 homes, 30 homes, on the average, there's a minimum of two cars a day. That's a very narrow road. You can't walk up and down it. We have people, elderly people, that drive lawnmowers for a ride up and down because they can no longer walk the road on a daily basis to walk their dog. The traffic, the speed, the speed people run that road is unreal. The bumps help it. I like the rough road because it keeps cars a little better, better traffic. If you add another possible 100 cars up and down that road twice a day, the speed of those cars going up and down that road is, is going to be phenomenal.
Thank you for your time.
Obviously disagree with this.
Hello, I am Dave Volper. I live at 13341 Canyon Road.
Can I get your name again?
Dave Volper. Last name is spelled V as in Victor, O-L-P as in Peter, E-R. I've, I lived at this house since 1990. It's one of the first houses in the neighborhood. It was built in '74. When I moved into the house, I was really excited. It had two wells and then when the inspection was done on the septic system, it failed and so a new leach field had to be put in. And because of the geometry of the lot, one of my wells was too close to the drainage field. So that had to be capped. Fortunately, the gusher of my two wells, two quarts a minute, was the one that I was able to keep. And so I just want to, I guess, let people know there's a lot of variability in well rates in the neighborhood. Some people get a lot more, some people get a lot less. My well is 350 feet deep and so it's a bedrock well. Must probably yield water from a fracture, I'm guessing. Anyway, I just want to let you know that I'm against this rezon and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Burn Davis, D-A-V-I-S. I live directly across from the proposed development. I'd like to inform you about the problems with the council meetings. There's a clear and strict requirement, 21.03.02.0(c)(1) for community council meetings before a rezon request can advance. The developer must inform the residents of the, of the proposal's details, show how the developer intends to meet Title 21's standards, take public comments and encourage dialogue. None of these things happened. The first one was on February 28th. We had another one. Mr. Dryer had roughly 12 minutes. There was virtually no discussion. We managed to get in a few questions, but it was pretty much anon. They had another scheduled presentation at the May 17 council at that meeting. They told us nothing, they had nothing to say. We asked many pointed questions and virtually got no answers. Mr. Bargason threw in a large sum of money and one would think that with that kind of money, he would at least know some of the answers. In my mind, these gatherings were both sham meetings. They did not meet the criteria that was clearly stated in Title 21. So this mandatory procedural step has not been met. Community council meetings are important. Developers should not be allowed to just ignore that requirement. The other thing that came to my attention today was we saw a, some of the comments on the notice of public hearing. And these things happen to have a nice little code, like a little serial code. Many of the comments that came in from as far as Nilchick and somebody that lives on 88th Avenue and strangely, Stephanie Maul, the Realtor, has cut off her name and these have come out. So virtually everything that's been in has now come from people who are affiliated with these people who do not live in the area. Just quickly, I would like a show of hands. We've had a lot of people drift out here because it's been so long. A show of hands, please, those of you who are here to oppose this. There we go, folks. Nobody's saying, "Don't build." We're saying, "Build it right." A lot of the, a lot of the property that has been built down there before, that was done in the Wild West days. We're over that now. We need responsible development and we've had nothing but adversarial. Mr. McGlaughlin's position is 180 degrees from Margaret O'Brien, another senior planner. She wrote a very thoughtful and reasoned piece and suddenly, Mr. McGlaughlin is 180 degrees. He almost looks like a cheerleader for the developers. We need some really reasoned discussion as to what should happen there. Everybody is pretty much opposed to having a high-density lot set up in that area. We need larger lots where people have a little bit of room to move. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to make any public comments? Seeing no one else that wants to make comments, I'm going to take another little break here and we'll be back in about five minutes. I think it, someone said they left it like right up front. It's this one? Oh, all right. No problem. All right, we have all the commissioners back. So petitioner, you have four minutes remaining for rebuttal.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. First, I'd like to point out that there have been a number of specific sort of factual statements made about the property. Negative ones, of course, we don't necessarily agree with. And we have a number of professionals here who can address specific questions you may have. I don't want to take my four minutes to go for unless something has resonated. But I would like to point out that the R10 zone actually requires the platting board before this development goes forward to, and this is right in, under the zoning R10 description itself. They have to protect natural features such as pond streams, wetlands. They have to cite design techniques that consider the topographical constraints. They have to avoid natural hazards such as mass wasting or snow avalanche areas. They have to respect the water course areas. Assure soil and subsurface conditions are suitable for excavation, site preparation, an onsite wastewater disposal and look at potable water. I mean, those are all things that are built into the R10 code. And, you know, it goes without saying that every rezon attempt, of course, is by someone who bought it. The question for this body, and as I pointed, it's our Supreme Court's made very clear, it's not a popularity contest, it's not who has more votes one way or the other. It's a question of, does it meet the intent of the code and the underlying planning documents? And if you look at map 6.6 in the HDP, this is the area that is in these steep slopes and upper elevations. This is the zone. I mean, if there were a precedent to be set here, it's that a landowner is voluntarily committing their property to probably the most rigorous zoning classification to go forward. And whether they succeed in getting their goals of development or not is going to depend on what they can present through the platting board. I'd just like to address the community council issue a little bit. I'd just like to address the community council issue that has come up repeatedly. I would point out that the, I was not there, but my understanding is that the Hillside Community Council meeting, Mayor Berkowitz spoke, took up a good part of the meeting. There was that much time left at the end. The Halo meeting, this project was not on the agenda. People didn't really want to be cross-examined about questions. There is no ambiguity in this community as to what this property is about. I mean, it has been fought, everyone's well-informed. The questions that come forth are the ones that really aren't proper under the code. What are you going to price your lots at? Well, it depends, I mean, who knows? We're going to come on the market here maybe three years from now, if we're lucky. So, you know, those are the sorts of things. You can't have a dialogue on that. And we regret that people feel like they didn't have it properly vetted, but they really do know all the salient facts on this in the appeal, which more than a few people have joined in, and more than a few people, including several here who spoke tonight, spoke against the conservation subdivision. So there's strong feelings here. Conversation's not going to get past it. I think we just have to go through this process. The question about the legality of the appeal, that was put to the director, ASAMC 2114010, basically charges the director with those legal interpretations. It shouldn't be a factual question for this body. We asked them to make that determination, and they have affirmed that it's properly before you. So that shouldn't be a deterrent or really a discussion point for this body. Really, the last point here, and, you know, when I say it's not a plebiscite, there are people who've come out, of course, who spoke in front for us. I will say that this is a family venture, and one reason why the R-10 rezone is here is that allows the Vergersons and the Joneses, who weren't, can't be part of the conservation subdivision, to participate and potentially subdivide their property. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Strike.
I do have a question. One of the components that came up when they handed us this diagram here was the drainage. And I believe in earlier testimony, there was a reference to only one drainage area. How do you reconcile, I mean, we're hearing conflicting.
Sure.
Is there five, or is there one?
Well, actually, I can answer that because we went through the platting. The code divides all sorts of water courses. You have drainage ways, and you have streams, and you have wetlands. This property has two identified areas of wetlands, and within those areas, multiple springs. It has one major drainage way. Different set of rules and setbacks apply to drainage ways. And it has one stream, and that's the stream that eventually flows into Rabbit Creek. So if you look at the map, I think they copied our map, and when we develop the property, we are going to have to develop along with the map stream and the map drainage way. That's actually no different whether we do it under the conservation subdivision or we do it under the R-10. It's just the R-10, we will have to reprove everything when we go through that process, that we've met the code.
Easy question. Are we back, was there one, or is there five?
What, streams?
Drainage, you call them drainage areas. Courses of drainage. During your earlier testimony, you said one. There's a map before us that says five.
There's one stream. There's several, actually, there's one major drainage way. I mean, if someone wants to come and speak more specifically to it, but...
We're going from one to one major, to one stream, to, I'm just trying, I'm trying to bring this in.
Let me have someone who's technically proficient, if I could, please, Madam Chair.
My name is Brandon Marcot with Triad Engineering. That's M-A-R-C-O-T-T. And we didn't get a copy of the map, so if I could please have a copy so I could review, that'd be helpful. We did do the drainage analysis for the other development, and there are multiple different drainage basins that you have to analyze.
For the other development?
For the R-6 development.
Okay. Same property?
To put it bluntly, we analyzed over 200 acres upstream of this property. So this property is roughly 77 to 80 acres. We analyzed over 200 upstream of this development.
Okay, real quick, easy question. Is there one, or is there five?
You're asking about drainage basins?
I'm asking about the earlier testimony from your, the petitioner, that said there was one drainage area on this property. Not one major drainage area, one. Is there, and that's when this came up. So I'm just trying to reconcile all the testimony here.
And, you know, I apologize if I was misunderstood. I mean, I think I said I agree with Mr. McLaughlin. There is one stream. A stream is different than a drainage way. There is one major drainage way that goes down the volume, and the other drainage ways, I think, were within the wetland areas. So, I mean, this map was derived, I think, from materials that had circulated before.
Now, we've gone from one stream to one major drainage to some other smaller drainage. Do we have one drainage or five?
Okay. Through the chair, if we could, please.
There is one municipality map stream, which is...
Please state your name before you...
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Todd Bronson. I'm one of the owners of the property. There's one municipality map stream which crosses Canyon Road and is the one that's marked as a stream in the blue. The others are drainage ways, which is because, over the years, everybody's water around us drains down into culverts, which dumps onto our property. So drainage ways were created, however, they are not official, like you're asking, are they setback? You know, they're drainage ways which you deal with through development, so you can, drainage ways are completely different than streams. So...
I'm just trying to reconcile...
Sure, yeah.
Your petitioner's comment. There's only one drainage way.
There's one, there's one stream. All of these other, others are official drainage ways that are created from a culvert that crosses at Genie Road. A second culvert has been put in without any permission that dumps additional water from up above us on the other side of Genie Road. This drainage way down in the lower southeast corner drains all the additional water from the up Canyon Road, down culvert, across, so, so yes, there are one, two drainage ways that are cross-culverted onto our property, and there is a third drainage way that extends from the wetland, and then one stream. So that's the official answer.
I just want to remind everyone, how we choose our words, how we present them, as we try to reconcile different testimony. No one sits up here and swears to tell the truth, the whole truth. We're up here receiving public testimony, so we're trying to reconcile this.
The thing that makes it, I think, somewhat ambiguous is the definition, you know, some people think that a drainage way includes HCP 50-foot setbacks, which is what we're trying to make a distinction of between drainage way and stream, and that's why we're saying that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. McLaughlin, I noticed that you were in there, all right. Anyone else have any questions for a petitioner or for staff? Mr. Looney?
Just to clarify, you mentioned earlier that you would support a special limitation to maximize the number of lots at 25?
25, through the chair, Mr. Looney, yes. We would accept that as a special limitation.
Yeah, how'd you arrive at that number?
Well, I think we generally thought that probably the maximum we could come up with was approximately 15, depending on more than what we had before. And that would have either been 29 or 31, depending on who you talked to. And I think we're just trying to offer something to make people feel a little better about this process. Mr. Bronson, I think, wants to add to that, through the chair, if that's permissible.
Through the chair, Mr. Looney, I can answer that question. The number of 25, we have painstakingly gone through, walked this property, you know, extensively. And the number of 25 at this stage of the game is where I feel the best, most appropriate layout that will allow us to bring in the Joneses, Vergersons back in to be able to meet their dream of being able to carve out a little piece of property for their children. And I truly believe, now that we've spent this amount of time, you know, really digging in, actually studying the property and walking the property, that's what I feel to be the appropriate number of lots for this particular piece of property.
So I wasn't around for the prior cases here, but I gather there's some history here in this property. And to just kind of help fill in some of my background, I'm curious, seeing that you guys had the application to the platting board that was approved, it looks like at the beginning of this year, is that right?
That is correct.
And that's the conservation subdivision that has, how many lots? Is that 16 lots?
Through the chair, Mr. Gardner, yes, 16 lots and one conservation tract.
Okay. I'm just curious how, kind of what the thought process was going from that application, that approval, to, and that was under the current R-8 zone, to then moving to this application to the R-10?
I think Mr. Bronson alluded to one of the reasons, which was because the Joneses, Vergersons lots were already subdivided, they could not be brought into, just because of the difference in ownership, into a conservation subdivision. So one of the goals was actually to allow them to subdivide so they could have some of their family members live in their area as well. That was one of the reasons. The other reason is the other plat is on appeal, and that's a process that can extend. I mean, fortunately, the Sand Lake Conservation Cases that led to the development of the Sand Lake gravel pit, those appeals lasted about eight years. So, you know, it depends on how determined the neighborhood is. So the thought was, let's put our best case forward.
Thank you.
And I actually have a question for staff. There's been a lot of concerns about how the, this is something that originally came up, and it was denied, and a lot of people are seeing this as something that's very similar. Can you explain why that two-year time limit does not apply in this scenario?
Yes. The first rezone application was in 2014, and it was recommended for denial by Planning and Zoning Commission. And the developer pushed it to the assembly, an assembly person, I think it was Jennifer Johnston, introduced it to the assembly, and the assembly deliberately elected to, or voted to postpone it so that the applicant could reapply and sort of clean the slate and reset and do, have a fresh start. That's why they postponed it rather than denied it, because they knew that a denial meant that they would have to wait two years to reapply. That's why they postponed it. And so there was no denial. Then they reapplied in 2017, last year, for a different rezone, and that was recommended for denial by this body, by the Planning and Zoning Commission. And a recommendation is not the same thing as denial. The commission only has the ability to make a recommendation, but does not decide the case. So the recommendation for denial, and then the case ended there, and now we are where we are today. So there's been no denial, is the bottom line. It's just simple as that.
Thank you. I think that really helps to explain the process for those that are interested and are kind of wondering why this is taken the route it is taken. And Mr. Gardner, do you have another question?
Yeah, this would be quick. This is for planning staff. Francis, I think you may have mentioned this in your introduction, but I just wanted to confirm my understanding, and I think it might be helpful to some of the people that testified here as well. These, if you look at the R-10 district and it lists, I don't know if they'd be considered factors or what, but these elements, A through G, how exactly do those, do those play in in kind of a formal capacity when the property is going to be developed? Is that something that needs to be satisfied officially, or are those factors? I guess, I guess that's my question. How do those play in as it's further developed?
It's a part of the consideration for the platting board at the time of the subdivision.
Okay. So they'll look through all of those and make sure that those are satisfied? Okay, thanks.
Are there any more questions for the petitioner or for staff? Then I will go ahead and close the public comments. And what is the will of the body? Mr. Spring?
Yeah, I'd like to make the recommendation to approve the request to rezone from R-8 to R-10 to the assembly. And I have an amendment I'd like to offer separately, because I'd like to have this standalone and discuss it.
It looks like there's a second by Mr. Looney. Would you like to propose your amendment now?
Yes, I'd like to propose a special limitation to restrict the development on the property to 22 lots total.
All right. And is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Gardner, would you like to speak to your amendment?
Yeah, I appreciate the second. I'd just like to have a chance to explain it. The petitioner's offered a special limitation to restrict the development to 25 lots. The reason I propose to reduce that to 22 lots is, in my calculation, and I just have used my smartphone for it, it appears that restricting it to 22 would make it more or less equivalent to an R-9 density. R-9 density is two acres per lot. I personally think 1.25 is too small for that area. If you look at the zoning map in the area, to the west, almost all the tracts are R-9. To the north, it's R-6. There's R-8 to the west, excuse me, to the east. If my calculations are right, then, and when they develop it and go through the R-10 process, which I think is probably the right way to do this, I think is probably the right way to take in consideration not only slope, but drainage, wetlands, and all that, in the final analysis, it's going to probably, with this restriction, it will be probably two acres. And I based that calculation on what staff said, when he said, "Well, you know, it's going to be about 0.45 dwelling units per acre." So that only leaves, you know, a lot of the land has to be tracked out for wetlands and right away, right? So with that assumption that the staff is correct, my calculation shows that it's probably going to end up being two acres per lot, which, looking for a compromise, looking for a way to satisfy the needs of the developer and ensure that environmentally, the subdivision's going to be developed properly.
Anyone else wishing to speak on the amendment to the main motion? Mr. Strike?
This is a question directed to staff. Question directed to staff with this amendment proposed. Any issues that you see as we've come forth with a special limitation, not otherwise presented in the written format, but I believe there's a verbal from the petitioner that they were willing to accept or looking to accept 25? Does this place any... I'm looking to see if this is going to create an issue or another problem, or if there's any other unintended consequences that might derive from this special limitation.
The, through the chair, Mr. Strike, thank you for the question. I was just discussing with my colleagues. So the proposed rezone, this, the district that they'll rezone to, there are currently two lots and one tract. So if the wording of the special limitation is restrict development on the property to 22 lots, then it would mean that staff would have to interpret what development of the property to 22 lots means. Does it mean 22 lots total for the three parcels, or 22 lots plus the two existing ones? Or, so, so one version of that is it's 20 more lots than what exists. The other one is that 22 total. The other one is, is it 24 plus the two? So you might, I mean, a more declarative wording would be the district is limited to 22 lots. The district is limited to 22 lots.
And in your review... In your review, does staff have an opinion?
I think the wording is ambiguous. Did I...
The wording's, thank you.
Yeah. I would rephrase... I would rephrase it in a different way.
Okay.
On the fly, I sketched out, the district is limited to 25, 22 lots. I think that's the way Mr. Spring would want to.
Which would have included, which would include the other two lots as part of that. So the tract would apply for 20 plus the two.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Strike. We're creating a new district here. So become R10 SL. And so everything in this dotted line, within the dotted line on page 11 of your packets, when you look at that, that aerial, page 11, and then you think of the wording, the district is limited to 25 lots, then you say, well, it's easy. No matter what's going on, within this dashed line, it'll be a total of 22 lots. That's all that'll be allowed.
So that comes back to Mr. Spring's original motion as to what he intended.
Just to clarify, could we also use wording such as the petition site to encompass everything within that area, some, no?
So, so this is one of those things where I see a project from beginning to end, I will review the plat potentially, right? And so I know exactly what the, with the questions the Plating Board and I will be asking of the wording. And that's why I'm very specific about saying, the district, and everyone's sort of questioning this, but I know what I'm saying. The district is limited to 25 lots, not the bigger tract or the, you know, does it, it's just, it's always going to sound a little, it's always going to take somebody to have to think about it, right? That's just what we're creating. But I, I think that we can understand what the district is limited to 25 lots, because we're creating a new district. It'll be this district, R10 SL, shows the petition site in the ordinance. That's what I have to say.
I might want to offer, before moving on, offer Mr. Spring the chance to amend his, amend his amendment, unless he would like, there are some other members of planning staff still in the queue, unless he would like their feedback before.
Well, no, that was my, my intent was to apply to the zoning request, which is the district, the new R10 SL district. Yes, that's my request, my intent.
There's now no more planning staff in the queue, so if you would like to amend your amendment, is, is that how you're?
I so moved to amend the amendment to specify that the 22 maximum units or lots apply to the zoning request, the zoning district, which we're calling the R10 SL.
Mr. Gardner, are you still seconding that?
Yeah, I would second that.
And Mr. Strike, does that? Mr. Spinelli?
I'm going to oppose the amendment, just on a couple of things. The written support, I counted them up, and even when I add 14 votes for Hillside Community Council, the written support outnumbers the opposed. Also, as a residential developer, I understand the housing demand for this, this type of housing in this area. And even though there are several vacant pieces of land available, I've, I've walked almost every vacant land on the hillside with potential home buyers, and they're not finding what they want. I think it's south-facing property that has some views and is close to trailheads is what people are looking for. And then third, I don't think we should limit the developer below 25 lots, just on a purely feasibility standpoint and the, the ability to actually create an affordable lot, and I just don't think we need to put any more burden on them than the municipal process already does. So I'm going to oppose.
Mr. Looney?
I'll be opposing it also. Actually, I think the R10 fits this property pretty well. I realize that it's currently R8, but if you're going to start from scratch on the R10, it would fit it to a T, especially with, with the need to focus on the, the slopes, soils, drainage, flooding, and overall hillside conditions up there. So I think the 25 could be the, it's hard to tell exactly what the petitioner thinks, but they've already told us the 25 number, which I think it already presents a compromise. But that's the direction I'm, I'll be voting.
And Ms. Barker?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will also be opposing the amendment. It feels arbitrary to me. I feel like the, the plating process itself will be self-limiting, and that will ultimately decide what the carrying capacity of the parcel is.
Mr. Strike?
I guess I would comment to Mr. Looney's comment, because we don't have 25 before, 25 as an option before us. That's not in the written, that's not, that has not been proposed. And, yeah, we, no, we have 14 plus 15, we have 29 to 30, depending on the interpretation of how it's calculated. That's what's before us now, and Mr. Springs has come back and said that number, he feels more comfortable at that 22 level, as opposed to a conjectured verbal 25 that had been mentioned during testimony. And I personally, I believe the number is somewhere between our original. I don't think the R10 is quite suitable, but I think the special limitations gives us, this body, some ability to create a bridge of what's needed and where we can see a project materialize versus remaining and holding stagnant. I guess there's one body out there that I quite frankly would just like to see their impression of Mr. Spring's amendment, and I'd just ask the petitioner, if that's avail, if that's an option, of what they think about that, if they could adapt to that amendment.
Public comment is closed, so the petitioner is allowed to respond?
Hmm? Yeah, we've done that before.
Yeah.
So I, I.
You can ask.
Through the chair, Mr. Strike. I, I feel that, as I mentioned, I've spent a lot of time on the property and looked at a lot of different layouts, and I do feel that 25 is the appropriate number of lots and layout for the property. I would accept a special limitation of 25 lots.
And before you step down, can you state your name again for the record?
My name is Todd Bronson.
And how do you spell your last name?
B-R-O-W-N-S-O-N.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And as Mr. Spring's motion is still on the board for voting, I wager my support for the 22.
Is there anyone else wishing to make a comment on the amendment? Mr. Gardner?
Way in here real, real quick. I, I struggle with this, but I think I'll probably end up opposing it as well, for the reason that Commissioner Barker mentioned, which is that it feels a little arbitrary to me, and without more information, it's hard for me to vote for the limitation of 22 without kind of greater understanding of how that would play out, and I just feel like I don't have that information on hand right now.
I also am going to make a comment. I will be voting against this amendment. However, I will hope that someone proposes amendment for the 25. I too feel that the 22, I would have liked to see more math on why that is the number allowed, or some justification for it. But we can, if this does not pass, there can still be an amendment for a 25 special And I like the concept of creating a limit on the property, because one aspect that we, that needs to be followed for an approval is that it does not exacerbate an existing condition, and that is one thing that, existing problems, and that is one thing I want to stay mindful of. But again, I will be voting no against the 22 limitation.
And I guess I would just comment to the bodies of so forth. We, we don't have mathematical evidence on the 25. So for all the same reason you're trying to, everyone, this body's looking at saying, well, 22 doesn't sound right, but the 25 does, and the reason the 22 doesn't sound right, A, B, C, we don't have any information on the 25.
And the motion fails, or the amendment fails. The motion is still on the table. Does anybody want to speak to the main motion or propose an amendment? Mr. Gardner? Oh, were you still in the queue from last time?
Yeah, I was still in the queue, didn't realize.
Mr. Looney?
Okay, I'll do it. I realize this, the 25 is, could be considered arbitrary, but I guess I'm putting everything in context of, of the number of lots. If you just take 77 acres, and so let's say four acres per lot, it'd be right around 19 or so, but by taking out the wetlands and the roads and drainage, I still think that the 25 feels like a good compromise. I know that R10, to me, just feels like the proper zoning for this type of area that needs so much focus on these hillside challenges, you know, I guess I mentioned already, the topography, the drainage, the wells, the septic. So I'm really good with R10, and you can almost leave it at that and let it fall out, because I know that the permit process itself is going to require detailed analysis and solving those challenges. So I'd like to move that we add a special limitation of 25 lots to the petition site.
And just so that we can be clear and keep it to the same, it's to the district, is that correct?
To the district, that's right. The 77-acre district.
And if you can just click the motion button on there, so that way if someone wants a second, all right. Does anyone want to discuss, anyone have any discussion or questions on the amendment? Seeing no further discussion, call for vote. And that motion passes. Oh, oh, sorry, sorry, failed. Sorry, I was looking at the wrong section. It's not majority rule, you need five to pass, and so I was just looking at the vote. Mr. McLaughlin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So there are seven members of the, seven, seven commissioners present. Takes five positive votes to pass anything. So you've just explained why the previous vote failed, because three people voted against it, and the most that you can have, vote against something and still pass is two. So whatever motion is made next, or whatever vote on the main motion, it'd be helpful in your vote if everyone understands, you know, why you're supporting or not supporting. I hope that that is providing guidance to the commission. Thank you.
Mr. Spring?
I'd like to make a motion for amendment. I can't push my button, though.
I think we're ready now.
Yeah. We're running out of numbers, but I'd like to propose a special limitation to restrict the total number of lots to the district to 23.
And is there a second? And would you like to speak to your motion?
Well, we're just, we're kind of arriving at a, kind of a compromise, I think, through the process of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I'd be happy with 23. I think that's closer to what I think is the, what the surrounding property lot sizes are. Like I said before, the, to the west is R9, and to the east is R8. So you have four acre minimum to the east, you have two acre minimum to the west. So this is slightly above, below two acres in my calculation, based on what staff has said. I could demonstrate what the calculations are, but I don't think we want to go into executive session or anything, but, so it's somewhere between R9 and R8, and this is sandwiched in between them, right? So it seems like we're getting towards where it's kind of in between the densities and surrounding area, and it's more compatible, I think, this, this limitation.
Thank you, Mr. Spring. Mr. Spinelli?
I voted against the last amendment, because I was not in favor of the 25 limit, although I would vote for it again if it came up, to, just to get, put this to bed. But I will not be supporting 23. That's the opposite direction of what I think we need to do.
Thank you. Ms. Barker?
Thank you. I, again, will not be supporting this. I feel that the plating process itself is the one that will tease out what the actual maximum number of feasible lots is on the parcel, and I trust that process, rather than our trying to boutique this and shoehorn it into some other classification other than what was applied for.
Does anyone else wish to speak on the amendment? I'm going to speak on the amendment. It may take me a moment to gather my thoughts. First off, when we're doing this, I think some people made some comments about which one was the most popular, who's been getting the most votes, who has come up and spoke the most in favor or against. I do not think that that's how our body should nor does make their decisions here today. Further, when we're trying to figure out how many lots should be allowed, I do agree we should put some deference into our Plating Board. However, I also feel that, for the reasons that an R6 was not appropriate for this location, that it just would allow too many dwelling units, the same reasons that I don't fully feel an R10 should be allowed as well, and I do feel that there should be some special limitations. I like that we're getting closer to a number with 23, hoping that it will work for the petitioners. However, I will not support an R10 zoning without a special limitation. So for this reason, I am going to support the special limitation of 23, because I feel it is a good compromise between what the community members want. It also takes into account trying to promote the best use of the property with the limits of the special features of this area, which do make it appropriate for an, an R10 to an extent. So I will be supporting this amendment and call for the vote at this time. So this motion passes. Pretty sure I got the math right on that one. Does anyone, are you some in the club, Mr. McLaughlin?
So all the testimony that has come to this point, the next vote will be really important, and one thing that I am unsure about is whether or not the applicant knows that the special limitation that he offered of 25 lots included the two lots that already exist, existed. So did he mean 27 total, you know, the larger tract, or, or not? Him answering that question would clarify, clarify this.
If you would just come and clarify that issue before we move forward.
Through the chair, Mr. McLaughlin, in answer to your question, the, the number of lots that is being negotiated is, is based on the entire district, as you described, to include the Jones-Vergerson property as well as our property.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Does anyone want to speak to the main motion? Mr. Spring?
Well, I've been through, I think, at least, this is the third public hearing, plus we considered a motion to reconsider one of our, so I think I'm pretty familiar with the issues here, and I understand the concerns that the neighbors have regarding the drainage and some of the traffic problems and the slope in the area, but these things can be overcome by good development. There's new advances in septic systems that I think will ensure through the municipal process that this is developed properly and that there's not the impact that the public thinks there will be, based on the number of units that we recommend to be allowed here. Particularly traffic, the issue of the road being not sufficient or adequate for the new development, I don't think is something that I'm terribly concerned about at this point. The number of new trips per day on this road isn't going to be very significant, hopefully, and I will make this recommendation myself to the AMATS group, because I'm on the committee for the road project, the transportation plan, I'll be making a recommendation that they include this in the transportation plan in the future, because these, this is, this is applied to all development and in new development in Anchorage, particularly in areas that are kind of marginal. Eagle River and Chugiak experienced the same problem with development that isn't supported by adequate transportation, adequate roads. There needs to be a real effort, I think, for the AMATS and the, and the public to step up and finance some of these projects. The density, I think, is a good compromise that we recommend. As I said before, this area is surrounded by developments that are not that much different from what's proposed here. I don't think you're going to notice increased density as a result of this development. To the east is R8, which is fairly low density, to the west is R9, which allows two acres, there's R6 across the street. I don't think the character of the community is going to be changed one bit by this development. I think with the special limitation we have on that, though, we'll be able to ensure the public that it's not going to be outrageously high number of lots in this area. If we didn't put that special limitation on, then there's really no way to convince them that it won't go up to 32, or, which would be allowed under the maximum development in R10. So I think the special limitation was appropriate in this case.
Mr. Spinelli?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion to amend the amendment of the special limitation from 23 back to 25.
We're waiting for the computers to. And is there a second? Would you like to discuss your?
I guess I feel bad, it seemed that we had the votes for the 25, so I thought we should try it again before we send these people on their way.
I believe since we've already voted that specific amendment down, we cannot address that.
This is, would be a new motion, amending an amendment.
Except for your new motion is identical to the motion that was previously denied. So I believe that we.
Can I offer a new motion?
If you offer an amendment to the amendment that is different from an amendment we have previously covered, you may.
Okay, I'll restate my motion. To amend the special limitation to be a maximum of 25 lots with a minimum size of 1.26 acres. I know this is not a game, this is people's livelihood.
Point of order, point of order.
Can we have some quiet while we're discussing this?
Point of order.
Mr. Spring, you had a point of order.
My concern is that this amendment, these amendments are going to conflict, and I don't see how we can avoid that if we entertain the new amendment. And any other, we already approved this amendment for 23, so I don't think it's appropriate to approve some, or make amendment, motion for amendment that will contradict that or override that, you can't override it.
I actually believe that, Mr., I could be wrong on my rules of order, but I believe that when, once the vote on the amendment happened, we can no longer amend that amendment. Would that be correct? I believe so. Also, there is still no second on this motion, and so seeing no second on the, on the, on the motion, the amendment dies, and however, it's also withdrawn, so it further dies. We are still then speaking on the main motion with the amendment as approved. And if you can follow that, congratulations. Mr. Spinelli, do you have any further comment? All right, Mr. Spring?
Yeah, I neglected to add that I believe that the, the motion is consistent with the comprehensive plan, as well as the hillside district plan, especially in terms of the density that is recommended in those plans.
Mr. Gardner?
I have a couple of points. I'll be supporting this motion with the special limitation that we voted on. I had some concerns about the density, and I think this helps address that, and I think it works, a compromise that will work, well, hopefully both parties can live with. Specifically, I wanted to address a couple of points, I think a lot of the commentary we heard, aside from that issue, there was a lot of commentary about, concerns about wells and the water in the area, and I just wanted to highlight that that is something that will be considered later in the development process under those factors specific to the R10 district, and I think that's another reason why the R10 district might be helpful for this location. On the question of traffic, in addition to the comments that we heard, I just, I wanted to point out that, you know, in our packets, there were no comments received from the traffic department or from the Department of Transportation with respect to this application. And I also wanted to note, I guess I've been on the commission for about six months, and in general, I've been pretty impressed with what seems like the dialogue that's gone forth through the public process, with the applicants, applications that we've seen here and the relevant public, and this case unfortunately seemed like there was a bit of a breakdown in that process. We heard some description that maybe Mayor Berkowitz spoke, and there was some limitations on time for the relevant community council meeting. I don't know what the details of that were, but it certainly seems like that process and communication could have been dramatically improved, and I think that would have made a difference in the hearing today and how the relevant folks in the neighborhood would have felt about this application, had they had more of an opportunity to understand what the intention was, what the plans were, and to give, feel like they were part of the discussion. I just wanted to make that point.
Thank you. Seeing no one else to speak, I want to make a couple moments about, make a couple comments about why I will be supporting this motion. Going by our rezoning standards, this needs to, a rezone needs to be compatible in scale with the adjacent uses. I think without a special limitation, that could have gotten unreasonably larger, there is, hillside was zoned with the idea that it'd be more dense further down the hill, less dense as you move up. This creates this and encourages it to be more of a transition area in that zoning and density. It also encourages a greater proportion of future hillside growth to occur. Lower in the hillside, like I said, it really does allow more people to move into this area, but in more gradual area, in a more gradual spectrum. Also, one of the reasons that I think an R10 district is appropriate is that this site is really, I don't know if the right word is speckled, but is covered with a lot of different geographical features, and having something that takes the slope into account for every single lot that will be developed, I think will help make sure that they're maintaining the features in the area, not creating adverse impacts on the environment and the drainage issues that could account for those down the hill. I also wanted to comment that while there were no comments from traffic, that the municipal agencies will review the future subdivisions and the traffic engineers can do an impact analysis statement at that time. For those reasons, along with the ones that have been previously stated, I will be supporting. And also, I just do want to echo the comments of Commissioner Gardner, that I agree, having been on community council, having had the chances, hear so many of you come up and speak to comments, it really usually is the case that everyone, at least, even if they disagree with it, that the process seems to work, and I sympathize with people that this section got cut short when it was presented because of a time constraint. However, it does appear that everyone within the area did have notice, and they did have time to present their comments, so that they could be received by us. So I thank you for your work and for being involved in your communities. And call for a vote. And that motion passes. Just want to check with my commissioners, see if anyone needs a break before we move on to the next agenda item. Seeing no one needs a break, then we will move on to case 2018-0053. While we're waiting for people to clear out, I want to thank the next people on our agenda And staff, are you ready to present on this item?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Case 2018-53 for zip kombucha is a request for a conditional use approval to allow commercial food production in the B3 zoning district. The proposed project includes interior renovation of an existing single-story building for food production. The kombucha produced will be packaged for wholesale distribution to other retailers, as well as sold onsite in a tasting room. The existing site has legal non-conforming rights for the lack of required landscaping, pedestrian amenities, and the structure encroachment into required setbacks. This project is exempt from the requirement to move in the direction of conformity, because no, no changes are proposed to the exterior of the building, and the interior costs are less than 50% of the replacement value of the structure. Even though the project is not required to move in the direction of conformity, the project proposes to add site lighting and a sidewalk connection from the proposed parking along the south side of the existing building connecting to Arctic Boulevard. Both items are changes in the direction of conformity for this site. The planning department finds that this conditional use request meets the nine approval criteria of AMC 210308OD. Standard number one is met. The Anchorage 2040 land use plan designates this area as a Main Street corridor with transit-supportive development, growth-supporting features. The proposed project enhances connections and pedestrian access to the commercial corridor and the surrounding neighborhood residential area by adding a sidewalk from Arctic Boulevard to the main entrance of the building. The proposed project also implements strategy two from the Anchorage 2040 land use plan. This project has the support of the local community, as evidenced through positive comments from the Spinard Community Council. Eleven parking spaces are required for this use. The site plan provided proposes 10 parking spaces on the abutting lot eight, and the petitioner will seek a parking reduction of one space from the municipal traffic engineer. If the parking reduction is not approved, the additional parking space will be required to be provided. A requested condition of approval is to provide a parking plan approved by the municipal traffic department. The parking for the commercial food production use is proposed on the abutting lots eight in a residential district. This request for conditional use is being processed simultaneously with a conditional use for parking as a principal use in the R3 zoning district. We are requesting that this conditional use approval be contingent upon the approval of the conditional use for parking as a principal use to be heard immediately following this case. An additional requested condition of approval requires the applicant to enter into the parking, access, and common development agreements necessary when required parking is provided on a separate lot from the use. Standards two and three are met. The proposed use is consistent with the intent of the B3 district. The B3 district is intended primarily for general commercial uses in commercial centers and areas exposed to heavy traffic. The proposed project meets the zoning recommendations of the B3 district and provides a new business opportunity for the Spinard area on the Arctic Boulevard Transit Corridor. Commercial food production is a permitted use in the B3 zoning district by conditional use. Standard number four is met. No changes are proposed to the existing structure on this site. The lot size is adequate for the proposed use when the parking needs are met on the abutting property. Standards number five and six are met. The proposed use is similar to the existing character of the area and will not alter, limit, or impair the use of the surrounding properties. The small scale of this business, along with the tasting room, makes it compatible with other small specialty businesses in the surrounding area. Alaska sausage is another commercial food processing use a few lots north of this site. Standard number seven is met, the proposed use is not anticipated to create any adverse impact to the area. Standard number eight is met, the proposed use is on a transit-supportive development corridor, and the site plan shows proposed improvements to the off-street parking and a new pedestrian connection to the street. And standard nine is met, the site is served by public facilities. In conclusion, the department finds that the approval criteria are met, and therefore recommends approval of the conditional use, subject to the conditions of approval on page six and seven of the staff pack. I'll be happy to answer any questions the commission may have.
Mr. Gardner?
Thank you. I just wanted to ask real quick, with respect to the recommended conditions of approval, and I guess I'm looking at number four, which is enter into agreements for access, common development, parking, and a parking reduction of one space. Is the intent that this condition encompasses the obligation to provide additional space if the parking reduction is not approved? And should that be in here somewhere, I guess, is my question.
The intent is, yes, to require that additional space if the parking reduction is not approved. We cannot record a parking agreement if it's not legal for the use.
Got it, so the recordation requirement would necessarily include that obligation?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Strike?
Yes, thank you, through the chair, to the staff. Is the parking area, I'm glancing through here, and I didn't recall seeing it, will it be paved?
Yes, that will be paved, that'll be addressed during the next conditional use, which is for the parking in the residential district.
I would be the one to bring that up, seeing as what happened two, I mean, two meetings ago.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And seeing no other questions, would the petitioner like to come up? Please state your name for the record and spell it if you have a hard spell in one. And then also let us know if you'd like to allocate any time for rebuttal.
Okay. Melissa Branch, B-R-A-N-C-H, with Big City Engineers. And I have Jesse James with me, so I'll talk first. And we'd like to keep four minutes, I guess, for rebuttal. As you can kind of see when we've been talking, there's been a great deal of coordination with MOA staff, both planning and traffic, as we've been kind of working towards this, because Mr. James is actually leasing the property and we've uncovered these issues. So we've been working to figure out how best to navigate through those. So the conditional uses, both this one and the next one for the parking, and the agreements that are in the conditions, correct a lot of those issues and are greatly improving both the look and functionality of the site and of this area. And we had an opportunity at the Spinard Community Council, they actually did a meet and greet at the beginning, so it was an opportunity to talk to the neighbors and help us stay conscious of, because we're proposing emergency access, so that fire could actually pull through the site to get out if necessary with the parking we're proposing on the other part of it. So with that, I'm going to let Jesse talk.
I'm Jesse James, that's J-E-S-S-I-E, last name J-A-N is in November, E-S. And I just quickly wanted to say that, you know, having looked for a lot and a facility for over a year, I have some very specific requirements for my process. Three-phase power, large overhead doors, and concrete floors with good potential drainage. But I also was really hoping to have a retail storefront somewhere where I could be part of the community, you know, get good traffic and be able to share my product directly with my customers and not be tucked away into an industrial area. And so this site very specifically fits a lot of those plans, and that's one of the primary purposes for selecting this site. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Strike?
Well, I'm going to sound like the Idian here, but what's kombucha? Tell me, first off, does everyone else already know what it is?
You may want to pronounce it for him, too.
Really? Explain it.
Kombucha is a non-alcoholic fermented tea. So it starts out kind of like a southern sweet tea, and you add a bacteria and yeast culture. And through the process, the yeast actually do what they do in wine and beer making, and they convert the sugar to alcohol. But the bacteria actually eat the alcohol and turn it into acetic acid. So it has somewhat of a vinegary flavor, really drops the sugar content down. And a lot of people say that it's good for your digestion and other things. I'm not making any health claims about my product.
So you're not subject to any of the other tasting room requirements that we see with the beer breweries? Is that correct?
Correct.
Microbreweries?
Yes, only trace amount of alcohol remains in the beverage, so it is not considered an alcoholic beverage.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing no further questions, is there anyone here from the public that would wish to testify? Come on up to the front, state your name for the record and...
My name is Brian Betts, B-E-T-T-S, and I live on Indiana. And I'm commenting on the parking, the possibility of drive-through parking off of Arctic. And I don't know if I'm at the right time, or is this the right time to do that?
Yes, this is one of the times that you can...
Okay, well, thank you. So anyway, there's a lot of apartments, fourplexes on that. My daughter, she's nine years old, she'll be 10 here, and she rides her bike up and down that street. It's a dead-end street. It was, it's a chip gravel street. It's not an asphalt. It was just done chip. So I'm kind of worried about a lot of traffic on that, making the street not as good as it is. I'm a little tired, excuse me. I just, I just want to, I just want to address that there's not going to be drive-through traffic and turned into a, you know, where you can drive all the way through from Indiana through his property and then go out to Arctic, or vice versa. I think that will open up a, an ability for all the other businesses that should be multifamily that are all parking lots to be able to drive through and make that no longer a dead-end street. There's a, there's a place down at the end of the street, the Asian place, I've never been there, but they, you could, you could drive through there if they ended up making that through there. Obedys has a gate there that you could be driving through there. I'm just, I'm trying to keep the traffic down. There's a lot, it's, it's, there's only three houses on that whole street, and everything else is multifamily. Eight units, and then four units, four units, four units, and a couple more units at the end. So that's what I want to address, if I can. So I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else wish, come on up.
My name is Sherri Syme, and I live, I live on 3506 Indiana. And I'm looking through this packet that says a memorandum from the traffic department that specifically says that access is to Indiana Street shall be limited to emergency access only. Is this memorandum something that is part of the deal, or, because Brian is my neighbor, and we're both concerned about the excess traffic coming through there. So if it's only to be an emergency access, will it be gated, or, or, I'm just not really clear on what's going to happen either. And I prefer not to have all the traffic. If it's going to be a small place, it's not like it should have, it looks like remove the one-way arrows from the shared access aisle, which is wide enough to show two-way traffic. That seems appropriate for this type of a business, and that would keep it all onto Arctic and out of our residential area.
Ms. Calhoun, would you like to respond to that?
Yeah, this will be further discussed during the next conditional use, but this is a emergency access only. It is gated, and it will only be used for fire. There will be no through traffic onto the street from this development.
So it's really not an issue, then? I'm just, I'm just making something up out of anything. See, okay, thank you.
It's a good question.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And would the petitioner like to come back up for any rebuttal?
Not so much rebuttal, as clarification to both of the neighbors who came out, is we have been talking to traffic, and that was one of the things that was discussed and sounded as correct, is that it's emergency access only, it's going to be gated, nobody else is going to be allowed to use it, we have to maintain it. Because we were really concerned about that, and traffic was greatly concerned about that, and it was never our intention to actually allow that cut-through traffic, so.
Anything else you want to add? That's it. Mr. Strike?
I just have one comment for the petitioner. And thank you for communicating with the neighbors, and I would encourage you continue talk with your neighbors. We sat through, you sat through, what we saw, we've done that three times. But keep, as a business owner, small business owner in a community that's impacted, that you have two residents that took the time, keep the communication up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Looney?
I have a quick question. Vehicle access will be gated. How about pedestrian access? I mean, what if one of these fine neighbors wants to try kombucha?
So that would be something we would have to talk to traffic about. They were, it wasn't something that came up about us trying to purposely provide pedestrian access to the residential neighborhood. So it would be something that we could discuss. They were very concerned with us providing access to Arctic, but then really, I mean, maintaining that separation from Indiana and from the residential neighborhood. So that would be something that we would have to discuss as we go to finalize the, you know, the parking plan.
Then we can close the public comment, and what is the will of the body? So far, we have zero will in this body. Oh, there we go. Mr. Looney?
Okay, so on the case of 2018-0053, a conditional use to allow commercial food production in the B3 zoning district, I move to approve the conditional use in accordance with the recommendations on packet and sheet six and seven, one through five.
Seconded in by Ms. Barker, would you like to speak to your motion?
It looks like this is a project that is well-received by the community, and it looks like we've addressed some concerns about the local residents, and it looks like a good step forward to some of the redevelopment that's happening in this part of town. I support it.
Does anyone else wish to speak to the motion? Ms. Barker?
Thank you. We also find that the proposed use of commercial food production is compatible with existing uses along the same strip there. And that the, I guess this is actually more germane to the next one, but that the, they, the petitioner has been in consultation with the surrounding community and has designed their plan in such a way as to limit adverse impacts on the existing neighborhood and the residential uses adjacent to the rear.
Thank you. Seeing no other people in the queue, call for a vote. And that motion passes. So moving on to case 2018-0054, staff ready?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Given the fact that this has been a rather long night, I will try to keep this as brief as possible.
Thank you.
This is a request to approve a conditional use permit for a paved off-street parking lot as a permitted principal use in the R3 mixed residential district. The proposed development includes 19 parking spaces, a dumpster, and snow storage. Anchorage Municipal Code requires landscape plans to be done by a registered professional landscape architect. The plans provided with this application do not include a landscape plan and should be made a condition of approval with this request. Anchorage Municipal Code also requires that refuge collection receptacles be screened and set back from abutting streets. Outdoor refuge collection receptacles shall not be located in any required front yard setback. The dumpster enclosure included with this application will need to be relocated to a conforming location, and staff has also recommended that this be a condition of approval. Staff has received no objection from reviewing agencies or members of the public. Three comments did come in, and none of the three objected to the request. Thus, the planning department has reviewed the application against the nine criteria required be met by Anchorage Municipal Code 2103080D, and found that all nine standards have been met. I'll go through the standards quickly. Standard number one, staff finds that that, this standard is met. Specifically, it meets the policy seven and policy 21 of the comprehensive plan. The parking is being designed to minimize the impact on adjacent residential uses. The property will be used to support the adjacent commercial development. As was stated by Ms. Calhoun, the access to Indiana Street will be for emergency vehicles only. The redevelopment of the property will put the parking at the back of the structure with pedestrian access from Arctic Boulevard to the front entrance without having to walk across the parking lot to enter the business. Standard number two, the proposed use is consistent with the purpose and intent of the underlying zoning district. As was mentioned before, this is a conditional use in the district. The R3 district is intended primarily for multifamily townhouse dwellings characterized by low multi-story buildings, and it provides greater housing opportunities with efficient use of residential land near commercial community activity centers, town centers, and areas well-served by transit. This is a transit corridor. It does, the parking lot does provide a nice buffer between the multifamily that lies to the west and the commercial that lies to the east. Standard number three, staff finds that this standard is partially met. Parking lots with less than 50 spaces is permitted in the R3 zoning district by a conditional use. There is a requirement of Anchorage Municipal Code to require L1 parking lot perimeter landscaping. The applicant notes on the site plan that the L1 landscaping will be provided but does not provide a landscaping plan with the application. Thus, staff has recommended that this be added as a condition of approval. The parking and loading standards of AMC 2107090H have generally been met with some minor revisions required by the municipal traffic engineer, and that has also been made as a condition of approval on this application. Standard number four, staff finds that this standard is met. The site size, location, and topography are adequate for the proposed parking lot. Standard number five, staff finds that this standard is met. The uses surrounding this site are already developed with multifamily residential and commercial. To the north of the property, a parking lot for a commercial building exists, and to the south of the property, storage and parking exist for related commercial business. Standard number six, this standard is partially met. The use is compatible with uses allowed on adjacent properties. There's a mix of commercial and resident, and multifamily residential in the area. Standard number seven, no adverse impacts from this site are anticipated to affect neighboring properties. Standard number eight, this site, as mentioned, is along a transit corridor and has access to Arctic Boulevard and Indiana Street. Access to Indiana Street will be limited to emergency vehicles only. Standard number nine, staff finds that this standard is met. The site is served by public utilities and is located in an urban area. So with that being said, staff would like to recommend approval of the conditional use to provide off-street parking in the R3 mixed residential district, subject to the conditions on page six of your staff packet. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the commission may have.
Mr. Spring?
Yeah. Is it the policy of the planning department to accept applications for a conditional use without a landscape plan?
Through the chair, Mr. Spring, typically not. But given the fact that I don't believe that the petitioner realized that they had to submit a full landscaping plan at this time, we're making a condition, but typically not. Typically, they would be required.
So, well, I'm a little concerned, I guess, because, I mean, you could apply that, when do you apply that and when don't you apply that?
Through the chair, Mr. Spring, typically it would be required. It's L1 visual enhancement landscaping. It's a fairly simple landscaping plan to put together. We were confident that it could be done as part of the condition with this particular approval and reviewed prior to going to building permit.
Yeah, it's late, and I may be a little grumpy, but the user's guide, Title 21 User's Guide for a Conditional Use, does it specifically state that applications have to be included for conditional uses have to be included landscape plan?
Through the chair, Mr. Spring, I believe you know that there is no user's guide at the moment, so...
So there's no requirement for any submittal, no submittal requirements at all?
Through the chair, Mr. Spring, there are submittal requirements, but there is no user's guide.
Well, how can there be submittal requirements if there's no user guide? Because it says here that applications for a conditional use approval shall contain the information specified in the Title 21 User's Guide. Yay, I win. I didn't, as I said, I'm a little grumpy. But can I ask the new planning director what the plans are for a user's guide? Because I'm a little concerned about the fact that there's not any application requirements.
Just to clarify, the applications do actually have the requirements listed on those. To go to the point of the plans for the Title 21 User's Guide, currently, we're looking at staff capacity. We are backfilling a few positions. As those get backfilled, we'll be assigning those, the new hires or existing staff, tasking them with writing the user guide. So it's something that we have in the near horizon to accomplish.
Yeah, I only brought this up because it wasn't, it's not the first time that we got a conditional use without a landscape plan. And admittedly, we're not the Urban Design Commission, so we don't know a lot about landscaping. But sometimes there's an issue with respect to the adjacent properties that we want to make sure it's properly buffered. We might want to add to the landscape plan in some cases, depending on, but, okay, I made my point, I guess.
So the petitioner, can you come back up and speak on this case?
I think we've talked a lot about the parking. Part of with the landscape plan is that this is a conditional use. It was used before as parking but wasn't approved, and this is a great cost in him. And part of it was, we were trying to identify that the area was there to be able to provide it. Granted that we... Granted that we got approval so that we could work through all that, it's a lot of money to spend, and I understand, and I know, on larger projects, I understand the need for it and the wanting to see the details of it. We have no objections to any of the conditions that are on here and are willing to work through them. So we'll answer any questions.
Any questions? Seeing no questions, I open it up for public comment. Does anyone wish to speak on this matter? Petitioner, if you have any rebuttal? All right, then I close public comment. What is the will of the body? Mr. Strike?
Yes, thank you, through the chair. I'll make the motion here for the approval of case number 2018-0054, for the conditional use to allow for parking as a principal use in the R3 zoning district, specifically the lot seven and eight, block three of the Roberts subdivision. I will be supporting the motion. And the conditions that are identified on one through five of the department's recommendations are inserted, and find that all nine conditions for the conditional use have been met. Would also like to add one comment, that while this was a public hearing, that two individuals did speak on topic, but to the prior piece, prior case, which should be unnoted, that those issues were noted.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the amendment? Remembering that we have to make findings, or wish to make, speak to the motion, there is no amendment. Mr. Gardner?
On anyway.
Mr. Strike, did you want to speak to that? Whether he's asked, he said he was unclear whether...
They, all five, all five of the staff's recommendations are incorporated into the motion.
Thank you. Mr. Looney?
Twice.
I'll just add that, similar to the previous case, this is a, this conditional use gets, is well-supported by the community, the adjacent neighborhood, and agencies, and it's, I think it's a move in the positive direction for the neighborhood. I'll be supporting it.
All right, call to a vote. That motion passes. Thank you. And I'm guessing there is a motion to adjourn by Mr. Strike?
There is, but I'd like to speak to my motion. I'd like to compliment the chair for her first time holding the chair down. She did a great job.
It was not easy.
Thank you. It's not easy.
And there's a second by Mr. Gardner. Seeing no objection, we are adjourned.